Few technical issues. But I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, September fourteenth, regular meeting of the Verona Borough Council. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and living justice for all.
All right, roll call, please, Christine.
President Carpenter.
Present.
Vice President Matlin.
Present.
Christine Durunk, present. Janet Loalbo. Sylvia Provenza.
Present.
Trish Redzik Showalter.
Present.
Raymond Suchevich.
Present.
Joseph Warren.
Present.
David Recupero.
Present.
Craig Alexander.
Present.
Matt Pitch.
Present.
Thank you. This evening, we have no registered comments from the public. Are there any emergency agenda items? Not aware of any. Okay, at this time, council will hear comments on agenda-related items only. Please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand and clearly state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
These are items that are on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Walther, owner of Intervene, seven side one trouble about me. I just wanted to share some concerns we may have regarding food truck. And as it reads now, I'm presented with two things on there that they staple and hurt our business just by not being able to get food trucks into town. I'm making it harder to attract food trucks into Verona. There's, just so you guys know, there's over, there's, forty-two breweries just in Allegheny County, just in Allegheny County, and most of them is food trucks. So if we make it hard for food trucks to come to Verona, they're just going to shoot somewhere else. Food trucks were a big part of our business model, and we made sure that was okay. There are a few things that I saw specifically that I don't remember. The distance from the crosswalk intersection and other buildings to my home, seventy-five feet. And then the, I think it's twenty feet from crosswalks, and then it was fifty from intersection. And then the insurance thing, I think each food, you know, the food truck to put Verona on an insurance policy. It can be really hard to change. I have to do that with peer permits, which is fine, but again, they'll just go. They're, they're hard to get. Which, over two years, we built up a nice, nice rotation of good food trucks that we can start to touch. Know what we're gonna get. Plus, they already have to have, I just be careful how much limitations are being put on it because they already have very strict they're already about any of the elements. And things like that. Those were the two biggest things. I wasn't sure what it meant by no tags generators or other fundamental places of the public right of way. I'm not sure if that's meant by block or on the street too, because all of the food truck generators. Because they're not allowed to hook up to our building. Yeah, those were the biggest things. And I just got it quickly though, so I didn't want you to read it very well.
No, and I can sure be interested in the opposite, once things are in practice. So if you have further tell that's helpful and certainly if you have one that seems to be urgent, that would be great.
All right, yeah, I can go a bit closer.
The idea was to loosen the regulations. And a lot of the, a lot of what you brought up to us today was in the prior ordinance. So that's what we're doing, is set prior ordinance and see what we need and what we don't need in order to facilitate having the food trucks in the community. So I, I know we were thinking about advertising it tonight, and there's really no hurry to do that because the one that we have, we really aren't enforcing. We want to get something in and enforce, but that is something that meets the needs of our community.
Great, Jen.
Thanks. Thanks.
Any other comments on agenda items? Anybody on Zoom? Doesn't look like it.
No.
Okay, moving on. With the advice of a solicitor, I believe I can do this. I'm adding an opportunity for our new BIU representative to introduce himself. And the information he's going to give us is informational only, so it doesn't go against Act sixty-five. This is Mike McDermott, who works for BIU and is doing our code enforcement occupancy inspections. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Nancy. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Borough Council Board. My name is Mike McDermott, and I, as Nancy said, I'm your inspector to BIU. I'm a maintenance inspector, I'm code enforcement, I do transfer of ownership inspections, rental inspections, and I do your code enforcement call. To date, well, no, I shouldn't say to date, I apologize, not to date, until September first. I've had sixteen code enforcement letters, notices of violation sent out, of which four have abated, nine are open, two, there were no violations present, and two more need to be cited. I have completed and passed three rental operating licenses, and I have completed seven occupancy inspections, four of which have permits, one is open, and two are waiting on letters of intent.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? That's a great report. Thank you, Mike.
Just a comment, I appreciate your polite persistence as you, you know, we welcome you to the town to help out with the work we're trying to do. I know it's not easy. I know it's not just one knock on the door and you know, make things better, so I appreciate you.
Oh, can you speak to everybody who's on Zoom in the audience here? The best way to get in touch with you or to communicate with you, concerns they have regarding code enforcement and/or occupancy.
Anybody, anybody that has any questions or any notices of violation they may have received from me or inspection that I have already done, they can contact me on my cell phone. If they have questions about an inspection that I am going to go do, they're worried, they want to transfer their property, they don't want there to be any pickups, they can contact me on my cell phone or via email, and I'll send them on a checklist that should help them pass inspection.
Can you give those out? Can you get that out?
Four, one, two, nine, eight, zero, one, six, three, two.
And your email?
McDermott, that's M C D E R M O T T dot zero, three, zero, one, at gmail dot com.
Okay, so I, I just asked, I mean, obviously I have this information, but I just asked you to let everybody know, so anyone who's listening or might listen tomorrow or next week has the information to get in touch with you if needed. They can obviously call the office here, people didn't pick that up or the sound wasn't good.
Very much like to clarify this time, because I have just thrown my name and my info out there.
Yeah.
I'm not a complaint.
Right.
I shouldn't be receiving any phone calls about the address on Aaron or the address on Union or anywhere else that goes through the borough. I don't receive complaints. They have to come through the borough before I get it.
Okay, so you want specific code issues or occupancy issues?
Yeah, if, yeah, if specific, like if you proceed to notice violations from me concerning grass or concerning tires or approaching windows, feel free to call me directly. My number is on that list. Same thing with every inspection, I do every inspection, my cell phone number, not the block, these are any question. Somebody in the borough has a problem with their neighbor's painting wall, that goes through the borough first. Nothing coming. You guys have to weigh that and see if you want to dispatch me to take care of it.
Right.
It's not, I don't just get up in the morning, drive to Verona and say, I don't like that wall, send them a notice of violation.
Right.
Unless, of course, it presents a danger to the public, at which point I would definitely do that. If I see them in a danger or an unsafe structure, I will write out that letter in seconds before I even have an opportunity to tell me.
Right.
But you will know, of course.
Cool. That's very nice. Thank you. So in the future, we're not asking Mike to come here every month. He'll put together a report and probably Christine will be sharing the results of that report. So, but we wanted people to have an opportunity to see you, to hear from you, say hello, ask questions. Anything else, anybody?
Any questions? Thank you.
Yes, appreciate your time for coming here.
Quick question, are you gonna have like a monthly report, like, like, sort of like what you just gave? Presented to council or to Christine?
Every Wednesday I'll come in and I'll be able to
Okay.
catch up with Christine. She should be able to give that report to you guys.
Okay, perfect.
I don't know if you won't be coming out here every month.
No, no, yeah, I, I didn't mean coming out, I meant like just giving an update regularly to, yeah.
That would take me again, like, that's just, once my work is complete, that would be for some borough officer.
Yep, okay.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay. Next here on the agenda is the minutes, I wrote minutes here, and all I'm doing with the minutes at this point is letting people know that Christine is working on them, the backlog, and is also, you know, keeping minutes going forward. And we should have more minutes to approve. We don't have any tonight because that was her first time last time. And there's some tweaking that's going on with the minutes, but they are going to get done. Probably in the next month or so, we'll be able to catch up with all the minutes. Also, just want to mention briefly that we had an exec session before this meeting, and basically that had to do with personnel and discussing priorities for Christina Durunk, our borough secretary, and to establish expectations in how we can best provide support for her in her first four months here. So that's what that exec session was about. I just want to let everybody know, you've got two flyers in your package. One is about ALON, a meeting that's on next Friday, the twenty-fourth, and another flyer to nominate Borough Official of the Year, if you are so inclined. There is a planning commission vacancy. Mr. John Jablonsky has decided to resign as of the eighth of September. So I'm just letting people know, spread the word, if anybody's interested in being on the planning commission, which is now starting to meet more often to talk about the comprehensive plan. And I think we're going to take letters of interest until November first, November first. So we'll put that, we'll put that out there as well. We wanted to make this announcement here at the meeting first. And, oh, yes, so I, like, a motion to, that's written right here. Yes, I need a motion to accept Mr. Jablonsky, Mr. Jablonsky's resignation. Okay. First by Trish, second by Ray. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Okay, this next thing is something I forgot to do in the last meeting. We, as a council and from the borough, bought flowers for Tony DeLuca's wife when she passed back in August. And I did not get a motion and to pass to, to agree to spend the money. It's a hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-one cents that we spent on flowers for Tony DeLuca.
So it's a motion to ratify the expenditure of funds for the flowers for
Yes.
Representative DeLuca's wife.
Yes, what he said.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Suchevich, second by Ms. Provenza. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Just some informational stuff. There are a couple of copies, or there were a couple of copies of the schedule for the one hundred and fiftieth that's coming up this weekend, the eighteenth and nineteenth. The eighteenth is Community Day here at Railroad Park. And Sunday, the nineteenth, is a parade at twelve-thirty, and then a huge community picnic and mini car cruise up at Cribbs Field. Maybe later, Vince or Tim, if you come to the podium, please let me know where you want AJ and the crew to put the tables and the chairs at Cribbs on Sunday morning. Yeah, at the end. Yeah, please, thank you. And I believe that's it for me. Who's next? Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, there were also regarding the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, there will be street closings down here on East Railroad Avenue on Saturday and on Sunday. For the parade, there will be street closings on Center Avenue and Allegheny River Boulevard and East Railroad, where the parade will end. A couple of things here, I have the property on Athletic Street, I talked about it last time. I've been in touch with Matt on that, and everybody has a picture of that, but I'm gonna turn it over to Matt on that because I'm thinking of explaining the procedure, him and Craig actually, on that piece of property. The owners of the property, as you're looking at the picture on the left, they moved in there when I was a young kid. It says it's over fifty years since they've been there. The people on the right-hand side of it, they do not want, they will be willing to relinquish any rights to that property, but these two gentlemen could go into that more depth.
So it, it's just a small continuation of the alley up there that was never open, commonly referred to as paper alleys. Because the borough never officially opened or maintained that for twenty years, it's already theirs technically. It doesn't show on their deed that way or on the county website. All they have to do is work an agreement out between the homeowners as to one of them giving up their ten feet of it or whatnot. And then the other homeowner would just get it surveyed, write a new deed for it, and record it down at the county. It doesn't involve the borough doing anything, signing anything over, because technically it's not the borough's anyway.
That's exactly right. There, there's a lot of misconceptions with regard to paper alleys. They exist all over the common law and in every community. And the law with regard to unopened streets or paper alleys in Pennsylvania is very clear. If, if the municipality hasn't accepted the dedication of the roadway within a period of twenty-one years after it's dedicated for public use, and usually an acceptance is via ordinance, they have passed the ordinance accepting the public use of that, of that roadway, then the borough and the public in general lose any interest that they have. So any public alley, any paper alley or unopened street in this borough, the borough has no interest in it, zeros. It's no longer a borough issue. The public has no, no interest in that paper alley anymore. The paper alley or the unopened street has reverted to the owners on either side to the center line. Now, there's a, there's a little caveat to that. If that paper alley is in a recorded subdivision plan, then every member, every property owner within that recorded subdivision plan maintains what's called a private contractual right or a private right-of-way for ingress and egress along that paper street, even though it's never been open for however long it's been. The public does not, the borough does not, the people within the recorded subdivision do. It's a little bit confusing, but the law is clear, if you take your time to read, it was, takes time. It's like lawyers have to explain it, I guess. Now, there's another concept, because people don't realize the law with regard to paper streets, they think that the borough still has an interest and they may want the borough to vacate that paper alley. Where's nothing to vacate. I've seen boroughs that I don't represent vacate paper alleys before. When the borough doesn't have an interest in that paper alley, the, the people on either side can begin to maintain that. Well, in this case, the, the owner on the right-hand side, I should look at it, he didn't maintain it. The owner on the left-hand side did. Well, he already owned half of it, he just didn't know he owned half of it. And he continued to maintain the other half of it to the exclusion of the other owner. So he has what's called a case for adverse possession. He, he adversely possessed that half of the roadway that he didn't own. And that was what Matt was mentioning, that instead of going to court, the owner on the right-hand side can just acknowledge that the owner on the left-hand side maintained it for a period of excess of twenty-one years and therefore is the owner. And once that happens, he can go down and add that to his deed, because it's already just by Operation What. It's a little, it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to understand, but it makes sense once you get into it and read it a little bit. So that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing, several months ago, probably about four months ago, we talked about selling the two thousand thirteen Explorer, the white one out there. And I wanted to wait till Christine got settled in, or, you know, it's not, you know, a big rush on that right now. So we will proceed with that in the future here. And also on Sunday, September nineteenth, at two-thirty, Officer, Panine Officer, retired Panine Officer, I should say, Jerry Chrisell, he put together a memorial for fallen Verona police officer Joe Zanella, which was killed in the line of duty by Stanley Haas Jr. on that date of September nineteenth. And the son of Officer Zanella will be here from Arizona. And there's going to be a small memorial right out here in front of the police station. So, you know, the police department and council, and anybody else would like to, you know, be there. It'll be a short one, probably within a half hour, it should be done. At this time, that's all I have.
We are just confirming, up like you're not active.
Right, in front of the memorial, right up by the flagpole, yeah. And this was something that just came up probably about six weeks ago. The, you know, the officer, retired officer Chrisell, you know, wanted to do, there's gonna be other departments here and some bagpipes and things like that. And the chaplain from the F O C will also be there to say some words. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Borough Secretary Durunk, you're up.
Okay. I just have a couple of items for tonight. The first one is that I received a request from a member of the planning commission to reimburse him twenty-five dollars for a workshop that's on building a strong planning commission. And I would just need authority from you all to pay for this workshop, if that is something that you wish.
Twenty-five dollars?
Yes, it's twenty-five dollars.
So, does anybody have any comment or discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize a planning commission member to purchase the training for twenty-five dollars.
Okay, first by Mr. Matlin, second by Mr. Warren. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Okay. And then somewhat related to that, but I just put this out there as a, a potential policy decision during a workshop, workshop session. Maybe we can circle back and think about if council would like to have a professional development budget for members of commissions and committees, so that, you know, there's some limited amount that's authorized and, you know, we don't need to bring twenty-five dollars forward each time. And if that's something that council wishes to do, and as I said, can be discussed next time in the workshop session, now's the time to do it, because we are working in the twenty-twenty-two budget, so we want to be cognizant of that process and get it done. The next item is a mobile service that is being provided by Kenny Ross. There's an email received from the Shake Hog about, about this service. Kenny Ross is now starting up a, a mobile, mobile maintenance service, so the service technicians would come on site and perform routine maintenance, and there's a list, and there'd be a predefined cost structure for that. And the Shake Hog is investigating the level of interest among municipalities to see if there's enough interest, then the fee can be waived. And so the question just becomes for council, is are you all interested in that kind of service? Since I need to respond to the Shake Hog before next session.
On the paperwork, is it going to detail what they're gonna actually do?
There's, if you look at one of the many handouts that you have, it's, it's a stapled piece, and it has Gmail at the top, and it says Shake Hog Purchasing Alliance. If you flip to the second page of that, there is the flyer that was sent from Kenny Ross. And, and so some of the things they're talking about are oil changes and filters, tire rotations, wiper blade replacements, battery replacements, air filters, fuel filters. They can also do recall programming, brakes and rotors, light bulbs, tune-ups, general diagnostics and safety checks.
Pretty much a state inspection. I don't know how the board feels, but I think we're pretty, you know, pretty satisfied. We both have been, you know, with the service we did, through McDade and other local repair shops here in Verona.
I agree.
I mean, I'd like to keep the money in Verona, and I'm sure their costs ain't gonna be any more or less than what we're getting right now.
One of the things that concerns me is mobile service, fee may apply.
Right.
That, that's the fee that the Shake Hog is trying to understand. If there's enough interest, then perhaps Kenny Ross will waive that fee, and then it would just be the list price of the services.
And we don't have that list price.
They, they've, they've not released that to us.
Like I said, personally, I would like to keep, you know, the businesses going in Verona. All of our vehicle service here in Verona, the police cars are the bigger trucks of the street department. They're taking, yeah, they deal with the bigger trucks. A lot of the smaller shops, I like to deal with.
But I do know that in small repairs for the street sweeper, that McDade is able to handle that as well.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so that's good.
But that's my recommendation on that.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, I, I think if, if these are mostly minor repairs, and we can handle most of the minor repairs locally, then it's all, I mean, it's almost easier and cheaper to just stick with McDade.
And we're supporting a pound business.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not like when you buy mass salt through the pile, where there's a benefit to it, it's all from some other place.
Yeah.
So savings. I agree, staying local is my preference.
So it sounds like it's a no.
Okay, there we go.
Thanks for all of this.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it, bringing it forward. The next item is a little bit longer of an item, sorry about that, related to technology needs. So the first thing is related to technology is, you know, I've only been here two weeks, and in those two weeks, I've really been thinking about how can we use technology to, you know, advance the borough and streamline some of our internal processes, not only to, you know, free up internal time, but also, and that just provides a higher level of service to residents. And so for those of you that don't know, we have created an official Borough YouTube channel. The, the other YouTube channels were being posted privately, and now we have an official one. So if you want to subscribe to our channel, it's called Verona Borough PA. So it turns out there's a Verona in New York, so Verona Borough PA.
Spelled out.
Yes, and it's, and there's a space in between it. So if you just, you know, write out Verona, skip, be like a space, Borough, comma, PA, then it should come right up. And the old videos will be posted to that site, time permitting. We have other pressing issues like backlog of minutes and a twenty-twenty-two budget to worry about, but those old videos will be migrated over. So that was something I wanted to report out to, to the public. And then in terms of technology needs, I've noticed that to operate a hybrid Zoom meeting, we rely on the generosity of Tim to bring his camera and a big long cord to plug in, and Dave is bringing his tripod, so we can set that up. For the Zoom links, we rely on, you know, accounts that council may have. And so my question to you all is, would you like for me to purchase equipment so that we can operate meetings independent of, you know, specific individuals using their personal items? And related to Zoom, I also just wanted to put out there, and, and I don't know if this is the larger conversation or more research, we do have access to Google Meet, which is kind of like Zoom, but through the Google platform, which we already are paying for. And so, you know, that's also, you know, potentially an option. A Zoom account is fifteen dollars per month. A Zoom account is fifteen dollars per month per license, though I think the borough would only need one license because it's used, you know, primarily in this kind of setting.
And sometimes you can get a Zoom account if you purchase it the right time of the year and buy the whole year and it's a discounted rate.
I, I definitely think having, getting the borough to have its own equipment would be, I think, would be great. As far as the Zoom versus Google Meet, I, I don't have a strong preference there. I think if there's a cost saves, you Google Meet and it's the same functionality, then that, that might be, might be a little bit of a savings. I mean, right now, well, currently I'm just using my own personal account, so there isn't any cost to the borough for, for the Zoom. But, but yeah, if, if the, we're going to look to transition everything over to the borough to have the account and the A V equipment, then, yeah, we should look at Google Meet, I would think.
I agree. I think it's going to be a nominal cost for us to have. I appreciate people who offer their services that are items, but we as a municipality have those things. I think the better, especially with the nominal cost.
Yeah, I mean, it'll make it easier if, if, for instance, Tim's not here, I'm not here, you know, that sort of thing. Just so, and it resides in this building, it's easier, easier for setup, less coordination.
Easier for minutes as well. So if you streamline one of these things, if you're, you're paying attention to things, they're probably will get it. If it's easier for you to do, that's, I'll put that out there.
We do have a camera, I don't know if it'll work. So we'd have to research that if, if, if the camera will work. I tried to charge it up a couple of weeks ago and it didn't seem to want to hold a charge, so I'm not sure what that's about.
So do we, I'm not sure how we want to proceed with this, like, do we want to, you know, authorize a particular amount to spend up to that? Or you prefer I do some research and come back next time and say, you know, there are these three cameras we can choose from and these two tripods and whatever.
Your findings will guide us. So I think if you could actually, you know, if we budget for it, I don't know the prices at the bar, but if you could see what your research finds and offer up what your solutions. Consider would be, I think.
I would suggest that I'll. May, maybe share by email with us.
Sure.
What you find out and then we'll have information to discuss in two weeks, if you can do it.
Sounds good, okay.
I don't want to pressure you.
The only, the only thing I would add to that, and I don't know, maybe this is something to look at down the road. I don't want to jump too far, too fast, but if it would be feasible to somehow have a camera that shows, I mean, we, right now, we have a camera showing the dais where we're all sitting. But it's harder for people on Zoom to see the public or who's speaking in the public. So I don't know if a two-camera system, if that gets more, you know, too complicated, but, or if we necessarily need to do that right away. But it's just something, just in thinking about how our meetings have operated over the past few months, just something I wanted to throw out there.
I think that's the type of how that could be really. I'm not sure, but I'm entirely, if anyone knows.
I think basic would be best for people just to simply use navigating three-sixty more difficult technology, just for, like, you. One camera. There's a second one, I'm sure it's adding cost, but it probably won't be that much. But I agree, I mean, there were a number of comments, I even heard, you know, myself, people couldn't hear me. So I know unfortunately we're wearing masks right now, but for some people to have to see who's here or speaking or understanding the approach in a public comment, it would be nice to have a view, but I have seen that research, I've done, three-sixty cameras are expensive and the service is even more expensive. So it's two static cameras probably best, but if you want to research and find, you know, and let that drive my decision. Probably fairly easy.
Okay, great.
There, just to say, historically, many years ago, council passed a motion to get a system to put a camera up there above the clock and have it look down for live streaming. It was never done, obviously, but the people who put in this system that we're using right now are at the old pianos and stuff, it's just called End Stuff Music now. And he was here and repaired what was wrong from before. We could get an estimate from him of some of the things that we're looking into or wait for him. His name's John, down the line, just an option to keep it, you know, in back of our minds.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the, the last item I have under technology needs is that we are in need of a telephone in the back office. And I apologize that the quote didn't come in in time. So there is in the, a loose page in front of you, should be something from Phones Plus P A Inc. It's a one-pager. And so we were provided a quote from the company that installed the telephones. And to purchase an additional telephone, it's two hundred thirty-five dollars. And one hour for the technician to come and install it, network it with the other computers, you know, get it up and running for one hundred twenty-five dollars. And then anybody that's ever used those fancy phones, they're really more like computer systems. And so he would provide one hour of training so that we can know how to fully utilize those capabilities. And to me, this is a really important item because right now we have no owner's manual. I have no idea how to change the message. So if you call, like, it's not correct information and so that's not great for, for residents. And if we learn how to use the functionality, then it, well, I learned how to use the functionality, means I can streamline processes. And, you know, if somebody calls and they need to talk to Mike who was just in, then I should be able to just forward the call directly to Mike. And that'll streamline things for me and just make it a little, you know, better service for residents, easier for me. We'll get more stuff done and really advance the borough. So they're, they're able to do this soon, but it would be at a cost of four hundred eighty-five dollars.
Do you need a motion for that to make purchase?
I do.
I'd like to make that motion for purchase. I think it's one more thing and you're helping, you know, you're kind of setting up shop and making people brighter and visible.
Second.
Okay, first by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Suchevich. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass, thank you.
Thank you. And that completes my report.
Thank you so much. Great first report. Thank you. Okay, before we get started on the many reports that are coming down the pike, unless anybody has a major objection, I have consulted with the solicitor and it turns out that legally we don't have to make a motion and approve every single report. So starting tonight, we're not going to do that anymore. We want to hear the reports, very interested in the reports, but it's, it's just overkill to make motions and approve them. So we can save a little time that way. So that being said, go ahead, Chief.
Good evening.
Thank you, if people can hear you better.
This is for the month of August, we received a hundred ninety-six complaints, thirty-one crime reported, very clear, total arrests of seven, three crime suicide issues, twenty-one death or suicide issues, twenty-four borough code discoveries, and borough parking tickets of a hundred twenty-two. Our revenue and resources was one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents on the magistrate fines. The borough fines and fees collected were six hundred and seventy dollars, police reports purchases forty-five, municipal fines of twenty-one dollars and three cents, total fines and fees collected was two thousand three hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents. We also had another two hundred and seventy dollars.
Does anybody have any questions?
Quick question, oh, go ahead, Ray.
I see here, no amusement device permit fees, is that just the, the beginning of the year, Chief? Is that a one-time-a-year?
Yeah.
When?
Well, we haven't done it because of pandemics and some of the businesses, you know.
Okay.
So that's why we haven't the last year.
But normally, when you do do it, when do you?
Beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year. Are you planning on doing it for twenty-twenty-two?
Absolutely, unless.
Yeah.
Pandemics.
Once it springs back up again. We all know last year was a very bad year throughout every business, and homeowner.
Right. Okay, I just, is that it, Ray?
That's all I had, yeah.
You were next.
Yeah, and I'm just asking this because it's budget season, but I, I remember, do you know where the, all the fines and fees listed here? Do you know where they, do they go? Are they separated out into separate? To the general fund? Okay, yeah, we might have to look into that further because I know some of the numbers here don't, didn't quite line up with what's in the QuickBooks. But it, it may have just been coded to the wrong place. I just, I just want to sort that out so that for the budget for next year, we're budgeting, you know, accurate revenue. So, okay, thank you.
I just want to make an observation that I know last year was a, was a, was a low year in terms of we didn't ticket as much and things like that. So this year, we're showing approximately two thousand dollars more in revenue from all the fines and fees collected from the police department, so thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, Chief.
Oh.
I know you, you don't like to go into a lot of detail, but I know you've done a lot of work in the last month, I thought you got an official. I usually ask for narrative, I know some things you don't want to just say publicly and go through a long list, I know. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else for the police, Chief? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see what over here. Next would be the fire chief report.
Uh, we had eight fire calls for the month of August. The new engine, I got to call McDade and get the new engine inspected, so hopefully I get ahold of him tomorrow and get that inspected. Other than that, everything's status quo.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is the EMS report.
Evening. From August, yeah, sorry, my voice is not well. Fourteen A O S calls, four B O S calls, eight calls were had a review of the transport, two were dismissed, one cancellation, one false call.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Are we going to see you guys here on Saturday for touch of trucks? Okay. Okay, next up is Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. A few things on my report for this month was requested to prepare an ordinance limiting vehicles not in running condition in zoning districts within the borough and particularly within the business district. And that was in an effort to not have the business district in areas that were beautified, we're trying to make that a very nice area entering from Pittsburgh and entering from Oakmont to look nice and to not have vehicles stacked up in, on, on various businesses that may, may work that way. We, we, we have run into some problems on enforceability of that. I know we wanted to advertise for it. I think we need to just hold on to it a little bit further, maybe put it back on the drawing board and see if there's other ways or better ways that we can do what we want to do with, with keeping Verona nice in its gateways and entryways. And I'm sure that there are ways to, I, I don't know that limiting the abilities, that being the number of non-working cars in a business that actually works on cars to get them back on the road is the way to go. We'll continue on with that. I also provided council with an ordinance updating the food truck or mobile food vendor requirements. We touched on that a little bit in public comments. The idea with the ordinance committee is to get an ordinance that works for Verona. We've had an ordinance on the books now for four or five years, I believe, and, and it's never been enforced because it's just things in that order that said don't fit within the needs of Verona. One of the things that we've, we've done is, is relax the permitting requirement. Under the old ordinance, there was permitting requirements, under the new ordinance, there's not. There's already substantial licensing requirements from the Department of Agriculture and the County of Allegheny. So those are built into our ordinance. They have to have those, those licenses and permits that the state and county level require. There's some other things that we can go back and look at. We heard some comments from the public today on some limitations that might not fit within the community, communities' needs. So I did put that on there to advertise in case we were advertising the other ordinance, just to save some money and do them both at the same time. But since we're not advert, advertising the, the vehicles ordinance, I see no need to advertise the food truck ordinance at this time and to put it in the committee. We will have a committee meeting, I think, on Monday and we can move forward with that. And then once it's, the committee's satisfied with it, we can bring a recommendation back to Mayor and Council. The next item I have is an update on the community garden. I know Ms. Resident Showwater has had her report as well, so I'll just limit it to just my, I, we did get the green, return of service card back from the property owner's representative. Service has been effectuated on the, on the declaration of taking. So under the law, that property is virtually ours. They've waived their right to file preliminary objections. Now all we have to do is, is figure out, you know, the, the worth of it, they're actually going to donate it to us, which is a good thing. We're going to, I think, at least what Ms. Monroe said to me was there was some discussion about a plaque, having a plaque ceremony or something like that. I also contacted Oakmont Water in order to get water established down at the garden. I spoke with them last week and my understanding, was speaking with them, was that I spoke with Carrie, who sort of runs the office, she's not the office manager, but she's the one that runs the office. And she, she told me what needed to be done to get the water on. Then I got a call from a worker named Ryan and Ryan told me that the water service would be on today. So hopefully it is. I know that he had to go in there, dig a box or something, there's a, there's a line in there that they capped off before and they've got to reestablish it. But that's supposed to be done today, so it's not, hopefully the next day or two, water down there and.
Looks like it was done.
I'm sorry?
It looks like it was done today or yesterday.
Wonderful. And the only other thing I have to speak on is that there is a zoning hearing board meeting scheduled for September twenty-three at seven o'clock P M. I've put the advertisement in the newspaper. I have to, and I'm just going to check to see what requirements there are to notify either adjoining property owners or nearby property owners, depending on what your local word it says as to who has to be notified. Some places it's three hundred feet away and I suspect that's what ours is because I think that's what I remember Mark telling, the other places it's just adjacent property owners. But whatever it is, we'll be done with in the next two days. We have to post the property. And the, the purpose of the zoning hearing board meeting is to, is to boroughs application. Where the borough is seeking to put an illuminated sign in a residential area up a strip field. And that's not permitted in a residential area, so variance is required. So just like any, any person off the street, any that wants to have something that's not permitted in the zoning ordinance and variance is required, the boroughs are required to follow those same rules. So there will be a zoning hearing board meeting on September twenty-third. And I have heard, I believe, from all but one zoning hearing board member, I don't remember who was the one that has not responded, but I think I got at least four out of the five, if not five out of the five that, that have indicated that they're able to be there. So that concludes my report.
Pass two questions.
Sure.
Can you tell me the distinction between the business and official, commercial districts with this ordinance? Is it only for business districts?
Uh, there was some discussion on whether it was only going to be for business districts or whether it was going to be a, a commercial business, I consider the same thing. And whether residential was going to. Yeah, and residential was going to be included in that. And my understanding from just over the years was that there was a provision in the municipality's planning code, not the, the International Property Maintenance Code, that already limits your ability to have abandoned cars in residential areas. We reached out to B I U and in fact, that limitation is anywhere. You can't have abandoned vehicles within the community. Now, in. Now, in uh service stations and places that work on. Cars that aren't up and running, they're supposed to, they're supposed to be within an enclosed area. So that that's what we're sort of looking at. That's that's sort of the idea that we wanted to be able to make sure that these sunk up vehicles aren't going to be in our gateway.
Got it. My next question was about vehicle. Does that include cars, trucks, motorcycles, boats? I guess any vehicle or is it are these are car, truck?
Yeah, I I I believe it was motor vehicles, titled vehicles. I don't, I wasn't really looking at boats. I know that we have some. Some boat graveyards down uh near the river. We've been, we've been challenged by those for for a long period of time. And we're working on figuring out ways to to get those abandoned boats out of there.
Of course, and I think the intent, I'm understanding, is being a good neighbor all the way across. So if you're winterizing, store is one thing. It's not on your property, public property, that's another.
See, the thing about boats is that they're not titled in the same way that cars are. Uh, and there's no such thing with regard to a boat such as a salvage title. So if you store your boat down at Outboard Haven or or one of these local marinas and say you don't pay your bill. And they seize, they they won't give you your boat back. Well, there's nothing they can do with the boat. You can't sell it to anybody. It's useless, basically, unless you want to use it as a as a boat to just move other boats around the river. I I have a buddy that has a marina down in uh Washington's Landing, and that's what he does. Unless you can get it, unless you can get the actual title for the boat, there's there's really nothing you can do about it. There's no way to get a replacement title. There's no way to get a salvage title. That's why you have these boat graveyard stuff there.
Yeah, the second question was about ordinance for food truck, mobile food vendor requirements. I just want to note that. Public comments night, um, in two years of what I believe is not issue, I agree with much of what you said today. I know it's going to committee, but I just want to. Say that I I for section six think that there are distance and setbacks that need to be also reconsidered on here. I think a thriving community is going to have a lot of priorities, and it has a lot of curbs, it's going to have a lot of crosswalks. So I don't want this to hinder business, and I want to complement, so I'm just going to probably state that. I know that's the goal, I understand. But as it reads right now, um, I do look forward to the next draft. Thank you.
Just to add to that regarding the food truck ordinance, um, I mean, do we have current issues or problems with food trucks that we're trying to address?
No, I think he just, they, the goal was to have an ordinance that was enforceable.
Okay.
Have an ordinance, it's not enforceable.
Because, yeah, because the way, the the draft that we that we saw this week, I think, was. I mean, to me, I I I echoed uh Mr. Warren's comments and the comments from uh Ms. Walzer. That it's uh it's it's heavily over-regulating something that's already regulated by. County and state authorities, and I think we we really need to. To 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 back off quite a bit. There's a, there's a lot of language in there and a lot of restrictions, and I just worry that even. Even a few tweaks to what we have now is is still going to be really hard to enforce. So that's, that's. That's my comment on that as the committee reviews it.
Easily navigated, but I I just wanted to make.
For sure.
Last people have been in town because they know there's a food truck, they buy food or they buy food, they buy drinks. Again, hope it's complimentary during that.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions for Mr. Alexander? Alright, thank you, Mr. Um, Mr. Pitch, your turn.
Uh, first street reconstruction, all paving work is completed, all the concrete work is completed up there. I did meet with the contractor and we did a final uh walkthrough to measure the uh quantities. There is a patch that still needs to be fixed on south where some of the bricks are exposed. And I'm still waiting on his quote for the painting of the center line and crosswalks. Uh, so as soon as I get that, I'll be able to pass that along. The C forty-five demos, we're still waiting for county paperwork. The Cribbs Field project, I was in. Touch with the contractor, and I know there was a lot of emails going around. The county plumbing inspection is scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, all the miscellaneous plumbing issues should be finished up tomorrow. I made him aware of some of the other items, um, such as routing around the plaque, the uh some of the loose soffit. Uh, it sounds like he's planning on being on site with the plumber and trying to button up a lot of that stuff tomorrow. Uh, there's some miscellaneous things like the the keying of the doors to look at. Um. In the process, I will touch base with him to see what our options are, that maybe try to do something that's programmable or electronic rather than just pre-keying them. So that might take a a little bit of time there. Uh, I did get a text message from him about an hour ago. He has a shipping confirmation that picnic tables are shipping tomorrow. So we should have the actual metal tables up there. I would hope by this weekend, but I'll confirm with him as well. Other than that, I know it had been dragging on for a while. We did give some leniency with with materials and everything just because of the the crazy year. Um, I would look to say that he has drug his feet on a lot of the issues as well. That I would like this, the next council meeting is October twelfth. Uh, I'd like to present him with a a letter stating that if things aren't one hundred percent punchless out by then, that we start assessing liquidated damages.
That, what would be the date of that he needs to have his punch list complete? Would it be the twelfth or sooner?
October twelfth, it would need to be finished. And then I believe we could make the official vote at that meeting to assess him the damage.
You you do have an up-to-date punch list that.
Correct, and I was going to be meeting with him on Friday to, because after we're talking to him, I had sent him an unofficial one via email. And I, he touched base with him today. He said he was going to be working on a lot of that tomorrow. So I'll wait till then, we see what he did, he's done, and when he did, and then I'll write him out an official letter format of what is remaining.
What was the original date of completion on the contract?
That I'd have to go back and look. I.
Or roughly, I mean.
I think it was June or July.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so somewhere in that range. And I know, like, we we had given some leeway just because of some of the weather and and material shortages and things like. The 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 stuff that's been remaining for the past couple of months. I mean, it's just. Putting labor there and doing, the materials are are there. It's just physically doing work at this point. I know the county plumbing slowed down a little bit on the on the plumbing issues, uh but I've been told it's supposed to be tomorrow. Um, the camera installer, he was there today. There was an issue with one of the wires. Uh, so we're getting that straightened out and we hope to maybe have them back at the beginning of next week, finish the install on the cameras. The First Street sanitary line, uh, I've reached out to the contractor to get a schedule for that. Uh, he does have the notice to proceed from county, so we're just wait basically on his timeframe and see when he can schedule the work. We're getting towards the end of the year, so when we start looking at the uh budget process, I'll be sure to work with Christine. Make sure that we have the P A small water sore project in there. That's the one that um. For the C C T V condition rating of the storm sores, uh, the grant's two years alone, so we decided to push it off until next year. So I'll make sure we do account for that.
I I have that in our list so far. We we've started to have some budget discussions in the committee with Christine, so we can um. Uh, we'll double check with you on the numbers.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, the C D B forty-seven, the Wildwood Culver, that should be going out to bid in October. I'm working with Mr. Beneki in the cog to prepare everything for that. Um, still haven't heard anything back from the tree trimming, so we still haven't paid him anything, so we're good to go there. Um, I know we did authorize the other contractor to assess the trees. I have not got a schedule from him yet, so I'll make sure, I'll leave myself a note to. Get a schedule from him. Um, the the twenty twenty-one Green Lace Trails grant that we applied for, uh, we're still waiting to hear back from that. It's. I believe that they are holding their meeting in November, so possibly early December, we we might be able to hear back on that. Uh, unfortunately, we did hear back on the Act one fifty-two demos. Uh, we were not successful with getting awarded that grant. However, that takes me into the C forty-eight year. The same demos we applied for those, I put in a a uh pre-application for the same demos, also including uh two oh four West Railroads at that as well. Some of the other projects that I put in pre-application um for would be the Center Avenue Storm Sword extension again. Uh, crosswalk upgrades along A R B, um, Riverbank Park upgrades, which mirrors the uh C I T F grant we were unsuccessful with. And then um repairs and upgrades to the storm sword and stairs at the end of School Street. Um, all of these are just pre-applications that gets submitted to county. They review on base off the income eligibility and tell you if they qualify or not. And then in October, November, we'll actually do a full application at that point. So I'll provide, when it gets closer to that time, I'll provide more cost information on all that to see if we still want to move forward with applying for all, or or pick and choose one or two.
Uh, Matt, do you, those, what, I I forget if you you may have told us or maybe in the report. Uh, when would those hit our 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 book, or hit our budget? Those those projects that you just applied for?
Much like the Wildwood Culver I mentioned, C forty-seven, so C forty-seven is year twenty twenty-one. However, we're just bidding it in October.
Yeah.
So there's a, unless the contractor is like sitting waiting for work to do, there's a high chance that the work isn't done until twenty twenty-two. So even though these are twenty twenty-two grants, we'll find out if we're awarded them. More than likely, you wouldn't start making payments until twenty twenty-three, though.
Okay, so for budgeting purposes, we're pretty safe to. Plan on those for twenty-three?
It, it wouldn't be a bad idea to to still budget for for twenty twenty-two, but with the. With it in mind, that more than likely, that's, you wouldn't have to actually spend it in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, um, and then you have. You have estimates on the, you know, if we were to get those, what our match amount would be, right?
Correct, so anything that's going to be sore water related is a sixty-five percent grant, thirty-five percent match. Um, and I don't have the cost estimates here with me tonight, or I would move forward submitting a full application. I'd make sure all that's available then.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest if you could send, um, even if they're rough estimates now. Um, estimates of the total project and the the match amount to Christine and uh. You can include me if you want, but that'll help us with our budget uh pro- processes. We start putting that together.
Agreed, because it's almost a quarter of a million dollars in match, which is wonderful, but knowing how they spread out. We're, we're gonna have to honestly look at a budget coming up soon. We're. Matt, work, work can be very hard to get, and we have to to maximum degree. But just knowing that that quarter million dollars make one of the amenities that we have, but it's, you do have to budget either with a capital campaign or prioritizing for the next year. Because there's a reality that if we're awarded, that we have to then put the money up, so it's going to be not easy.
Yep.
We just keep doing it out of a little. I I almost had to do railroads from you applying, but. Just understanding how we're going to keep up.
No, and and just so everyone is aware too, the, I know the the match amount on the First Street reconstruction seems rather high at ninety-five thousand. That's unofficial, uh, obviously based off of what the final cost of the project is. But that was also approved to be paid from liquid fuels, so that's not coming out of the general budget at all.
So some of these are dollars that must be spent with dollars specifically for the project.
So the liquid fuels is, it comes from the state, and that's what's, you can, there's those whole lottery lists, salt, uh, your traffic lights. The only thing with paving project is you have to uh pre-qualify it, that it's a, that Pendon reviews the project and says, yeah, it's a good project. We did that with First Street Reconstruction ahead of time, so we knew we could use the liquid fuels for that.
Do you, do you still have payouts coming for that?
We haven't gotten one yet.
Okay, so there's, so that that, so that's still, the whole thing still needs to be paid?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then other than maybe some, like the um. The the line painting or something, I would expect it to pretty much be like a first and final, because all of work pretty much done.
Yeah.
Minor, like I said, the that one little patch and then uh the line painting. And the only other thing I had to discuss tonight, it didn't make my report. Uh, I received an email from the cog. Uh, this year's C I T F grants are opening again. Um, that's the gaming, economic development, tourism. They combined those two grants a couple of years ago. Um, they are due October twenty-second. Mr. Beneki's asking for them October fifteenth. Um, any qualifying project is economic development, infrastructure, community recreational, and public safety. Uh, the projects have to be a hundred and fifty thousand or greater. Um, last year, we applied for C I T F grants, which are a very similar grant. Um, one we applied for uh alley reconstructions, which was Peach Alley, Walnut Street, Sylvan Way, and Oak Alley. Um, we were unsuccessful with that, so just off the top of my head, I thought that could be another one to reply for. Uh, another one was for park improvements at at both uh Riverbank and Cribbs to repair and upgrade some of the play equipment. Uh, renovate the courts, uh, and then upgrade some of the pathways. Um, that one, some of that work has already been done. Some of it's overlapped with some other grants we've already applied for. So I think we, that would still fit the criteria. I would just have to revise it a little bit more. Uh. I'm not looking for any motions or votes tonight. I just wanted to bring that up informational wise. If anyone thinks of uh another project that they think could be a a good candidate, let me know. I can always throw some. Put cost information together, and then at the workshop, I'll probably have a a motion for that ma- that meeting to. Move forward with applying for whatever we decide.
Do we know what the match?
So the, uh, like the C I T F, there's no matching, there's no income eligibility requirements.
Okay.
Uh, the cog does recommend putting somewhere about twenty percent match. They they call it a competitive grant, so the the more you kind of. Help yourself, the more likely they are to consider you.
Ma'am, just a quick comment. You mentioned all those alleys. Would you please add one more, the little tiny one between North and Parker Street?
Yeah, that was, um, I I guess someone had referred to it as Oak Alley.
Oh, is that what we call it?
Yeah, so it's the, it's it's the T, it's the little one between Parker and uh North, and then it goes up to Second as well there.
Yes.
So that's what I, when I said Oak Alley, that's the, that whole section.
Strictly between North and Parker.
Yeah, that's that's part of it. That was part of the first.
Disaster. I mean, the holes are.
We had to put that in for along Children's Center also.
Correct, that would be uh the Sylvan Way one. So I mean, that one wouldn't take any, hardly any work. It would be a a copy and paste from the last grant.
Very short, man.
Um, so anything else, I'm I'm open to put together a cost estimate, and then we could decide at the workshop.
Thanks for adding that. Appreciate it. Badly needed.
So, um, another question that, back to Cribs.
Yes.
I'm assuming that uh they are still owed money from us, uh, match-wise and all of that, however, you should have that out. And so is what you're um suggesting to do. Um, I forget the terminology that you used, but it would subtract off of what we would. Pay them to finish out the whole project?
Correct, it's it's laid out in the in the contract. I can't remember the dollar amount. It's a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars. And and it's spelled out uh per day. So if there would be, once I submit him the official letter. If there's anything on that letter that would not be finished by the twelfth, we would then subtract that two hundred dollars per day until it was finished.
Okay, so we're not going retroactive, we're just saying, going forward.
I would, I wouldn't say so. I I think that would be a pretty tough fight, just because, I mean, we we had been leaning up until this point.
Yeah.
Um, so to try to to go back retroactive, being that we had never officially put them on. We've had some conversations and some emails, but never gave them an official letter.
Okay, okay, just want to get a better understanding. Thank you.
Like I said, I would hope to, after my conversation with him today, I would hope that it would be finished up this week, but I had had. A couple of those conversations in the past month, and it just continues to drag on. So I think it's about time that we uh. Give them some official notice. That way it's in writing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Matt, one more recommendation for consideration is at the end of Arch Street, where the public docks are, maybe take a look at that property. For river access, for residents, I think that might be worth exploring coming here.
Okay.
As we've expanded our our parks and our playgrounds and some of our um amenities and facilities, I think that that corner of Verona is something that might be expanded or.
Good.
Matt, can you offer a non-match match for the last day?
Um. I don't know, I'd have to look at that because, like, there's no. There's no m- match required. So I don't know if they would accept. A a non, are you, you meaning like a donation of property, like a community garden or something like that?
Or any kind of contribution, I'm not sure if we have others. Or any kind of contribution, I'm thinking of another grant that we need to provide to the community or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely ask Mr. Beneky about that.
And I have another question.
Yeah, can you speak louder so that people at home can hear you?
Yeah. If you don't have additional questions on grants, I did have another question about the zoning hearing board related to the Chris Field Marquee.
Yes.
I was wondering if we could discuss briefly what the communication strategy would be? I know there was mentioned that you need to notify to be required distance from the market, but perhaps um learning from the lessons of first street, you could make that more borough-wide communication effort around that?
I mean, that's, that's whatever the borough would like to leave, I, I did look it up a few minutes ago. Legally, we only have to send notification to properties within a hundred feet of it. Uh, and then also there is, uh like Craig said, the physical location will get a, like a yard sign put up that has the legal ad on it. Uh, beyond that, if we wanted to send out a, a text or, I, I don't know if it's on the website as a scheduled meeting. Um, I know the zoning hearing board meetings are scheduled for the fourth Thursday, I think that is, the fourth Wednesday. So it's on the day that the zoning hearing board usually would meet, but if we wanted to update it, uh uh I've not put anything else on Christine's plate, but I'm, I'm sure she could put a, a note up there and just kind of catch up people's attention.
So there's a minimum requirement of public notice, the zoning require, the zoning code requires this called public notice. And public notice is defined in uh the Sunshine Act as uh notice once each week for two successive weeks in a newspaper. So that's what you're mandated to do. It could be on a Saturday and a Monday, it could be on a Monday and a Thursday, but it has to be in week one and week two. Uh, seven days before, not greater than thirty days and not less than seven days before the meeting. That's what you have to do, but you're allowed to do anything else you want to do. Uh, we have to send it to, or we have to send a mailing to folks within a hundred feet away. If you want to send it to more than that, you're welcome to, but of course you're incurring the, the cost of stance. And they're, and they're not cheap, but it's, it's, they're not real, real expensive either. But I mean, in this community, people look at social media, so it doesn't hurt to put it on Facebook. It doesn't, uh, the zoning hearing board is a local agency and all local, local agencies are, are now fall under this Act sixty five. So we're gonna be required to post the agenda for the, the meeting. Uh, the zoning hearing board really is in the borough, they don't have their own internet, their own website. But my advice to my clients is if it's an agency under your umbrella, you should post that meeting agenda on your website. It's required to be on the borough door and, and the council chambers as well. So those are additional ways to get the word out. But uh, it's a thorough decision whether you want to put, you know, additional mailers out. But I think it makes sense to put it on the Facebook page, uh and other media, if, if you have the ability to do so. That way you'll get, you know, you get as much people here that you want there.
Specifically to First Street, I had one resident, not reach out to me, but to all of us, I, I went to their porch and talked to them off First Street. I talked to three other residents and stayed at the cross for about an hour when school was, second day of school. And I think some of the feedback was just considering the flow of traffic. It just, you know, it might be at a minimum that it's one hundred feet or whatever. The, the sentiment that was shared by the resident was that's only a minimal, but we're a small town and just one more step would have been, of communication would have been easier for them. Um, they fully understood that we were at times when school was starting, we were talking to contractors at table, they fully acknowledged all of that. What was the communication of it, they just said, look at the flow of traffic. Um, some of the people that were remarking about it didn't know, they're not on Facebook, they're eighty years old, they're ninety years old. Um, so a knock on the door, no, it would have helped, you don't know who those people are. So I think lesson learned, I just want to say that because I'm sharing with you uh from residents.
And you're, you're referring to, to the notification of residents in the vicinity of the construction?
Yes.
Because yeah, I, I was gonna mention that, that, um, and Matt and I talked back when it was going on. I think there were a few lessons learned about communication, I think, you know, we know that, that next time we'll be able to do better in, in notifying not just the people on that street, but adjoining streets. And um, maybe make sure that there's, there's better maintenance and protection of, of sidewalk traffic while it's going on, especially in a school there, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I think when it comes to the first street in hindsight, certain streets like Union and uh these groups that are one way, uh we probably could have had door hangers or, or mailers go out to those streets as well. Uh, and, and again, the, the contractor didn't help himself at all, squeezing himself up against the timeframe so, so tightly like that. Uh, so I'd hope in the future that uh we don't have to squeeze into such a tight timeframe and we can get to the borough website and text out a week or two ahead of time. Uh, I don't want to put them out too early because then people just ignore or forget about it. But I, I will admit that this time I received a call, I think on a Tuesday, they said they restarted Thursday. Uh, but it was one of those things, we couldn't really hold them up or they wouldn't have been done before school either.
Yeah, and it was in the contract, right, that, that we needed them to finish before school started?
Correct.
So, so yeah, we were kind of put into a, a hard spot there.
Well, in the future, maybe start the pressure a couple of weeks earlier too than what we started.
Yeah, this, these past few years, I mean, and it hasn't just been grown up, I've talked to other engineers at Senate, it, it just, I don't know if the contractors have too much on the plate or they don't have enough labor or material delays. It seems like everyone that has had the resort to sending the, the nasty letters of get the work started, get the work done. And uh, hopefully things will start to normalize before, because I've never had to do that before, a couple of phone calls or an email got the, got it started. Yeah, I'm, and this was first year I've had to send those letters out.
Yeah.
I can vouch for that on other, other contractors in the area.
Yeah.
You know, similar projects, yep.
Okay. All right, is everybody uh complete with their questions for Mr. Pitch? All right, moving on, that, that would be Mr. Warren is up next.
Thank you, I have two items tonight, first is Allegheny River Boulevard repair status. We have a sewer access um at Jones Street and Allegheny River Boulevard that has been identified as, as a drop where he's been repaired. So I'll talk to Matt about it. Uh, he's, he had explored whether it was Penn Hills, Penn Dock or Verona, and I didn't find it at Verona. We're taking a look at whether it's approved to do it internally or not, or whether we should have it done uh by a company to have it fixed, but you're gonna see there's a huge drop, there's two orange buildings and it's under review right now to fix that. Um, I know we talked budget earlier this week with Ray and Dave. Uh, I believe it would fall as the number highest of priorities, but I appreciate the thought.
Can I ask you a question, Joe? I don't know, it says Allegheny River Boulevard, but then you said Jones Street, I'm confused. All right, offshoots.
Corner there.
About a carpet place. Oh.
Brother clinical signs go up every.
Yes, 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 okay, yeah, I know what that is.
So that should be corrected at some point, so it could be uh not a hazard for cows or cars and bicyclists.
Okay, great.
Um, Matt, and I see things that.
No, no, I just had briefly talked to AJ and the guys, it gets, it's in a weird position, so they weren't sure with just using the backup, they would have the greatest of access without having to interfere with traffic too much. So I did talk to a, a contractor that was working on a project for Senate in uh Edna, uh replacing a lot of similar inlets. Um, so just verbally over the phone, he said it would probably be about a five thousand dollar fix. Uh, he said, if I needed him to come out and give a better quote, that he would more than be happy to do that, so.
So is that, so is that something then that our guys could do or that we would need to get a contractor to do?
I, I'll talk with AJ about it, when I briefly mentioned it to him the other day, he just, you don't have all the range of motion with the backup and to, to park it the right way, he'd be blocking an entire lane of Allegheny River Boulevard, which then even, even though Penn Dot says it's not their inlet, then they tell you, oh, you have to flag by our rules.
Oh, yeah.
It just brings a big problems. Where a, a contractor with a, a mini excavator can kind of sit in the curb line, dig sideways and have a lot better access and maybe only need one guy with a flag instead of uh stop and slow paddles and coins and everything.
Right down the road from there, every time we get a heavy rain and flood, they're right, you know, probably about fifty feet down, and we've had problems there before. And um, we've been going wrong and wrong with Penn Dock, and we're not the only community with the highway, I know Monroeville, they've been fighting with Penn Dock, you know, vigorously um for cleaning out their sewers, but they say that's your problem, even though it's a state road, they won't touch it, but that's your problem as a community. But uh, we need to look into that too, right across from Calabrese, there, that's um building there. We, AJ was about that, we've done that, you know, many times, I can't remember if Penn Dock actually came out or we contracted somebody to do that. The last uh rain, we had about two weeks of a heavy rain, it was all flooded there, of course, you know, they're very slow. So they're just backing up, I think there's two sewers right across from each other, they're back up.
Okay.
Joey or Matt, real quick, are we looking to include that in, like do it by the end of this year or for next year's?
Uh, depends on the cost, what the budget is, so that's.
Yeah, so once we.
Next two metrics will help outside of.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll bring that to you and Ray for maybe to decide if I would have to quote um public works and also finance.
Yep, thanks.
Yes. Second piece is work requests from the Borough Public Works, so um with all the things we're doing to get our house in order, we just need help uh onboard these first few weeks. Um, asking that we streamline communications through Christine for anything, so we're not putting a, a wish list out and not prioritize them, not put dollar amounts to them and not protect uh which pieces should be done, so uh just want to say that in general for the work that we have to approve. And also want to say uh after the past uh week, Happy Labor Day to our crew, to AJ, to team for all they do, enjoying their Monday off. Uh, their work is every day here on the road, on the weekends, in some cases, uh so Happy Labor Day to them, appreciate all their hard work. Well, President.
Joey, I have one thing for TPW.
Yes.
Uh, will you be talking to them, it was brought to my attention from one of those school crossing guards that uh second and center, the crosswalk lines haven't been painted up yet.
Yeah, it's not attended by the crosswalk guard either right now, I noticed that this morning, I dropped a pick off. Um, I can ask, yeah.
Second center, so if you could check on that, needs painted?
I would say the same for first and south, uh but let me take a look.
I haven't been over, I don't know.
One of the things we talked about earlier this week was the cost of availability of paint at this point, so not knowing what we have in stock.
If they've painted everything else, I'm just wondering if they, they have enough paint to.
Yeah, I will, I will definitely check.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just mention anything along first, but hold off until I have the quote from the contractor.
Yes.
If the grant was paid for that.
Correct, um actually, would that extend onto the intersection of school, onto that school um south or center? Does it extend beyond just where the?
Yeah, so we were like the, the crosswalks that would go across south and across center, those would be included in the payment.
Got it. Again, another reason to work through Christine, so we're not having four different paint crews same day, and he pays different homes, so. Um, noted, and I will check on that, make sure that we're not having any interference.
Okay.
Can I also add south and east, yeah, those considerations?
Okay, these are all room.
So it's um like right in front of the building, yeah, there's um crosswalk, but it's, I also market as well with the light side, so hopefully.
Have we talked about last?
I'm not sure.
Well, south and east railroad is where that, that sort of faux brick.
Yeah, so the texture surface we talked about last month, um, I would say yes, probably for the fire and paint. And we're gonna take a look at your plans, so take a look at that, it's one of the places. Um, and again, the cost of availability of paint probably doesn't drive any of this, including the other workings, so make sure you painted as well that we've identified, so yes.
I would just say in general, in terms of the, at the intersections, crosswalks, lines, the word stop, like that, that's what's there, but all faded. And in general, given the constraints you're talking about, we would like them to do the entire town except for ARB. ARB in center and ARB in south. Patrick said that at some point coming up, some, whenever Penn Dot decides it's time for us to get paid, they will do those.
Well, you said we can do it.
Oh.
If we knew it was coming up within a year.
Okay.
I mean, we're not sure, we have to.
Right, well, they can put that at the bottom of the list and we'll see where we're at when we get the rest of the town done. But there's a lot of faded lines and, and uh crosswalks all over town.
Yeah, and minus the paper alley that we're gonna be providing back to the resident, there's nine point one miles of, of roads. It's gonna be tough, but if we can identify them, if we can grade them, prioritize them for the next five years, I'm sure we can do these in the order that we need. Uh, there is a lot to be done, there's a lot of roads, even if every road is freshly painted now, we're gonna have to plan for next year.
Right, well, they started down here and they did a few lines and the word stopped. Uh, and it looked really nice and fresh when they did it. And then they stopped, I don't know, it's because of all the rain or whatever was going on. So, thank you. Um, you're complete?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Matlin?
Uh, thank you. Um, so all I really have is the uh August financial reports, which everyone on council should have. Um, the uh, the balance sheet. You should have the budget versus actual report. The uh total income through August thirty first in the general fund is one million six hundred fifty six thousand, six hundred ninety one dollars and ninety cents. And when compared against our budget, it is eighty point five six percent of the budgeted amount. Total expenses through August thirty first in the general fund are one million ninety two thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and forty seven cents, which is fifty four point two six percent of the budget. Um, so I'd say in general, we're, we're, we're tracking pretty well in both, both areas. Um, the large receipts that we had uh in this period, uh Oakmont Municipal Authority, uh sewer rental fees, the amount of forty nine thousand, five hundred seventy one dollars and eight cents. And Comcast uh quarterly franchise fee, which is basically just a five percent of all their uh cable revenues of eight thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and twenty six cents. So um, I'll make a motion to accept the monthly financial statements for the month of August.
We can do that, but we don't have to.
Oh, is that applied to the financial reports as well, or?
Except it's your preference, Dave, if you want to, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I don't, I don't really mind, I, I missed, I thought that was just for the, the fire police and EMS, but.
I would, I would, I would continue the way you like.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the monthly financial statements for the month of August.
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, first by Mr. Matlin, second by Mr. Suchovich, any other questions or comments about?
The only comment is that there's a lot of work that's been into this for next year's budget, and I appreciate, this doesn't happen, there's a lot of work that has to be done.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Okay, the next one is uh the bills and disbursements list. Um, we had a total of, and this was through, I believe it was through September first, because Rachel, our, our bookkeeper was, or September third, I'm sorry. This is August twelfth through September third. Um, Rachel was on vacation, so we, we got the report a little, we got the bills, um, or some of the checks cut a little bit earlier. And um, we cut off the report then, but uh the total amount is a hundred eighty four thousand, five hundred forty nine dollars and twelve cents. Uh, the only large disbursement here uh is the Alka-Sand quarterly uh for eleven hundred seventy accounts for the service period ending uh May seventh, twenty twenty one. And that was in the amount of a hundred fifty one thousand, hundred twenty four dollars and ninety eight cents. So I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills dated September first, September third, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one.
Second. Okay, first by Mr. Matlin, second by Mr. Suchovich on the, the bills. Uh, any other questions or comments?
I would just say that there's, there's absolutely no question that when you're paying bills, that has to be done.
Okay, so for the bills, yeah, because you're spending, for these uh expenditures, okay. Um, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Um, and that's, as far as motion items, that's all I have, I just wanted to make a quick note that we did have a uh budget, a finance budget meeting uh yesterday um with the committee and Mr. Runk. And um, we are working on getting together the draft budget. Um, I believe we'll have to confirm the schedule. Um, I believe we're gonna look to, to try to present that in October and, and we're gonna try to have um a. And, and we're going to try to have um a, a budget workshop session for council and public. Um, so stay tuned for details on that coming up. We want to get everyone's input and uh be able to review it and uh, and get feedback on it. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matlin. Ms. Reddick Showalter. That's for sharing screen.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. The first item under my agenda for tonight is the creation of an electronic tip sheet. So many of you may be familiar with the hard copies that are available in the Borough Office, but a lot of people, um, especially during the weekend and our transition, have asked for this to be made available online. So we did create a version that um, I just wanted to share with everyone. I know the ordinance committee did have a chance to review it, and I think a few others, Dave as well. So thank you for those who did already submit some comments. But you'll see that it is basically a electronic version of that form. However, we did add um, actually Joey about to add the last part where you can also include an image, which our new code enforcer Mike Piderma has strongly recommended when submitting these complaints. So I just wanted to share it again tonight, see if anyone had any additional questions or comments. And if not, if we wanted to move forward with um handing it to Christine at your availability to make available on the website. So uh, first part, um questions or comments? Okay, well, that is good news then. Want to go ahead and start screen share?
While you're changing that, I will make one comment.
Yeah.
I think the last version was, you know, how to turn in a, a renter tone. And I appreciate this being a way to submit just the neutral, just here's what it is. Provide a photo. I think it's got a kind of a lot of stuff, I think, inclusive of business district, residential. So I appreciate this being things up, I appreciate it being quick. And, you know, it's not five people, five complaints, they figure out who goes to try to.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for all, for helping that again. Um, so I know that we also had some discussions about a general um complaint or suggestion box, either electronic or physical. Um, I don't know if it makes sense to maybe be with this, or if that should still be a separate, or how we got through the clearest way to make these forms available for easier submission. So welcome any comments or thoughts on that as well.
I see you looking right at me. I mean, there, I, I don't have anything specific to offer tonight. I, I really want to think through, what does the process look like? Because in my experience, something looks good on one end, but then the user experience on the other end really may not be optimal. And so I really want to be thoughtful about, you know, when we introduce new forms, whether they're electronic or, you know, still paper copies, whatever they are. There was really thoughtful about, you know, collecting the information that we need and nothing extra. And having it move through the system in a way that's efficient and things can't fall through the cracks and all of that. So, you know, that's my commitment, is to try to make a good process. Um, and certainly I would welcome feedback as we unroll processes. But I can't comment right now because I just, I need to really think through, you know, what does that look like from, you know, a resident experience? Or my experience, or if something has to get fed to, you know, Mike at BIU or one of the department heads, you know, what does their experience look like? And um, you know, because we, we just don't want to create a different problem.
Yeah, that's totally fair. I obviously want something that is, makes sense to you, it's going to work. Because I think our uh flow that we had described, um, when I shared it through email, was I would all go through you to decide if it goes to BIU or if it was something serious enough to be elevated to council. So I'm just going to um leave that draft available for uh you, should you try to uh use that at some point again when your schedule priorities allow. If there's no other um comments, we'll not. That would then bring me to my next item for tonight, just a brief community garden update. I know Craig has shared the technicalities of what we've been going through lately. And many of you in the audience have been hearing about this for well over a year now. But we are very close to our groundbreaking for our community garden, which again will be at two four six west railroad. Um, I just want to take a moment and thank council. Um, many of you were there when we first proposed this idea for enabling us to get this far. It's a really exciting moment to have this groundbreaking, especially during our one fifty year. Um, and especially to Craig for his hard work on the deed, on getting the waterline set up. Um, of course to Nina Monroe, who um is the person who inherited this property when the family um moved away. And um also, of course, Claire Matway from Brokenburg. And I also just have to take a moment to send a huge thank you to everyone who's been racking up what I'm calling some bonus hours lately due to the abundance of critics that we are looking forward to using in some of those gardens. Um, most notably Kathy Lupe Maddox, Erin Clarimo, Colby Newbauer, Vince Loda, Shannon Baldwin, Red Prey, Jim Ashbaugh, Jenny and Ryan Manning and their whole, the entire cohort of children. And of course, the coordinating committee, which is Abrae Homa, Laura Jocke, and Kimberly Boller. So thank you, everyone, and I hope some of you have seen the flyer and can join us on the last weekend of this month, on the twenty fourth, twenty fifth for that. Um, are there any questions about that? Okay, great. My third and final item for tonight is an update on the Walkworks grant. So last week I forwarded all council an email that Verona Borough was selected for a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Walkworks grant that's through the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the PA Downtown Center for eighteen thousand dollars. This no match grant will be used to put together an active transportation policy for Verona, so one-year grant. Um, and we'll be working closely with the planning commission. We're hoping that this will be an eventual chapter of our to come comprehensive plan. Um, so Christine has graciously been helping me submit our letter of commitment and also our budget that she should do in October. So just excited to share that news with everyone. If there's any questions and comments, I'm happy to take those.
Um, has it been discussed or looked at for this to be like more like part of a comprehensive plan rather than a separate uh effort, or is, is that being looked at?
That's the goal, yes, is to have it be part of our eventual comprehensive plan.
Okay, so it, would it go on in the, I guess, what's the timeline for that versus the comprehensive plan? Do, do we know?
Well, of course, we don't know the timeline for the comprehensive plan. It would depend on how successful we are with pursuing grant funds for that, which Christine's um been looking into some conversations to start thinking about. From waiting to buy, considering of course the budget and the match and whatnot. So um, that would be several years, but hopefully having this as a potential chapter would be a good jumping off point to securing that um math grant for the comprehensive plan. But it could also be, it will be a scandal document as well to help guide. Uh, for anyone who's not familiar, active transportation, it would encourage um anything that's physical in terms of transit. So primarily walking and biking and the infrastructure and other things that go along with supporting that.
Could you give an example of what you mean when you say supporting that? See, I don't know.
So at the end of the grant, you will have a written document that is put together with a lot of input from residents and the town and data instructors that might say um, traffic coming measures at this intersection um could help to ensure safer um pedestrian uh crossing. Or perhaps adding a bike lane here, or as Joey brought up earlier, um making our waterfront area um more attractive to walk or bike into an addition of bike racks or um lanes or just helping parking in that area. Um, so it definitely intersects preparation as well as safety. And um, I don't know, Dave, maybe we can talk offline, but I thought maybe it could um be tied in with BOP as well. So that, that, those efforts maybe um help one another.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm concerned that it's, it sounds like it's coming in advance of the comprehensive plan rather than with it or following it. So I, I guess, i- is there a, um, is there going to be like a public uh like feedback or a community input portion of this?
Yeah, it's very community input driven, so there will be um many forums and surveys and various formats for allowing all of that.
Okay.
Could you um, let me know, when you say eighteen thousand dollars, it has to be spent in a year? Is that what the criteria is?
Yes, and it is a subcontract to um whoever we're working with, which in this case, um, who has identified already the Eads group to.
The what group?
The Eads group.
Eads?
E A D S.
Eads, engineers.
Yes, yes.
So what are we spending eighteen thousand dollars on?
So they will be subcontracted to work with us to develop a um active transportation plan. So that's the written document that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're spending it on that group for their time to produce a document. Starting, what's the start time date for this year?
Um, it will run uh, the, the letter is due in October and then our report, our, and we ended due October of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
So is that, is that passing directly through the borough? Is that through Walkworks? Like um.
Yeah, good question. I was going to clarify with the subcontract, if it passes past through the borough or would. I don't know if there's a preference.
Let me get eighteen thousand dollars here.
I think that's what Dave was asking, is let's do the pass through the borough or not, which I'll get clear.
Well, who, who's the prime contractor?
Um, the prime contractor?
You, you, like you said subcontract, so like usually the subcontract is someone contracting to another contractor who then would contract with the borough.
Oh, maybe. I was just meaning they're subcontracted by us to put together this plan, should we consider us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So my question, where's the eighteen thousand dollars right now?
Um, I did not take it and put it into my banking account. So it's offensive against Department of Health.
Okay, so when we get a check or when Christine gets a check in the office for eighteen thousand dollars, we'll know that it's for this.
Yes, I will be coordinating closely with Christine for all of these matters.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions or comments?
Will they all get any together findings to be considered for this from a couple of years back?
Absolutely.
Okay. Go for it.
Um, one, one comment, and I know we spoke a little bit last week um at the planning commission meeting. And I'm just, and I don't know how much um planning commission members are planning on being a part of the like resident participation plan for that. But one way, and this kind of ties into, um, you know, Dave's comment. One way that um, you know, because if we think about the comprehensive plan as like the guiding document of the borough and then this falls under it, one way we could make sure that this document is a living, breathing, active part of the comp plan eventually would be to um keep that public engagement broad and really about, at least some portion of it, really about transportation. And then really hone in on like the active transportation part, so that this plan could be implemented as required um to meet the conditions of the grant for the eighteen thousand dollars. But then at least, you know, we're getting resident input about all of transit, so that, you know, like what if everybody says, I, I hate bicycling? I'm never going to ride a bike and we only want things for pedestrians. Well, that's, or we don't want any of this, we just want cars. I don't think that's going to happen, but the point is, um, you know, we don't know what the big, if we only focus on the active transportation part, we don't know the big picture, we don't know the whole picture. And then, you know, there's potentially a risk of trying to like stick this into the comp plan in some way that it feels like an addendum as opposed to some integrated document.
Right.
Um, and so, and I'm happy to talk about that offline, um, if you want, or like another planning commission meeting. Um, because I, I, I think there's like such good potential with the comp plan and this, but, you know, it would be kind of great to piggyback them and, and get bang for a buck, basically.
Yeah, that was my thought as well. Thank you actually for a buck. But I see your point now, we definitely want to do it in a way that is. So, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I guess we should mention the planning commission will be having a meeting in October on the second Thursday, September. And that's all I have. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Trish. Um, Mr. Suchovich.
Um, Mr. Pitch and myself met with the police chief this week, uh, actually last week, I'm sorry. And we're dealing with the uh, dealing with that seventy-five thousand dollar grant. We go for the cameras and the communication equipment and everything. And uh, Matt contacted D C E D, I guess, I believe he contacted Craig also to make sure that this is all legal. That uh, due to the grant and due to the the startings of the equipment that we have, that the police, the police are able, the chief is able to add on to the cameras that we got. And um, we want to get started on that because we want to get the cameras up and running. So at this, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion, so the chief has the authority to purchase the new equipment as long as it pertains to the grant. And there, there's, there's money lines involved tonight, if anybody has any questions. And, and I'm not exactly sure of the money lines. Matt would, or Craig would know the exacts. But I'd like to make that motion that the chief, the police chief, has the authority to purchase um what the equipment that's needed toward pertaining to that grant.
Ray, I have a question.
Could we get a second, I think, first?
Okay.
Okay, I thought if you had a question, you didn't vote.
Oh, uh.
I'm sorry, I thought we had to get a sec, quite second and then a, a, then a question.
That's correct.
Right, so now, any questions, comments? First, first, motion has been made by Mr. Suchovich, seconded by Mr. Red, by Ms. Reddick Showalter. Any questions or comments?
Okay, you said we have cameras, but some of those cameras don't work. What's going to be done with those?
From what I understand from the chief and from Mr. Pitch, there's going to be cameras installed, there's going to be new cameras installed. And right now, I believe center and ARB, Wildwood and ARB. One of the cameras at center now is going to be moved on to south. There's going to be equipment purchased for in the police room. There's going to be furniture purchased for in the office, all in lines with what was in the grant.
I'm familiar with what you said because I worked with Craig on that grant. Um, where are we getting the cameras?
The man that does the cameras now is the uh, I don't remember his name, John?
His name's John and it's uh Security Solutions. He works out of the DA's office and then he runs the security camera also.
And he's the one that's, and he's the one that has our main, what's it, the mainframe there?
The motherboard.
The motherboard and everything that he's been working on for the past, how many years?
No, and, and for clarification, the mayor asked if that included the body cameras. Uh, I talked to Craig about it already. When I reached out to the grant, um, they said we had to follow municipal bidding procedures. So anything under eleven thousand three hundred can just be purchased. Anything between eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred, you need three written quotes. Anything above that has to be bid. Yeah, I anticipate pretty much every purchase to be under that eleven thousand dollar mark. And from talking to Craig, uh, a, a street camera versus a body camera, it's a different enough purchase that they can be made two different times. And as long as both purchases are under that eleven thousand, they can move forward with that.
You're likely going to different suppliers to get them.
Different suppliers, and same with like new office furniture, new office computers. Um, because the one thing he, he really wanted to get the ball moving on is uh, and that's working off of a laptop that's eight years old.
Eight years, ten years old and.
And if that goes down, they have one desktop for the entire station.
Well, when that grant with, when we were applying for that grant, there was quite a bit of office equipment that was included in that grant.
Correct.
So that's all.
With me, with him and Ray, we, we wanted to make this motion. That way, as long as it was anything that was a line item from that grant, it gives him the authority to basically get the quote for it and order it if needed. Um, and then with the quote um for the, some of the new traffic cameras, they're also looking at updating cameras inside the Borough building here. They're currently just black and white, they're looking to go color. One of the cell room cameras. They're currently just black and white. They're looking to go color. One of the cell room cameras in the the camera that looks at the hallway for the cells doesn't work. So they're looking to uh update those and fix those as well.
Is there an itemized list of where they'll be looking and what they purchase? I think you said furniture, but I don't know what furniture means, for instance.
Office furniture. No, they gotta he gotta get someone to come in, I believe, right, Matt?
Yeah, so he he'll get the like the quote. I mean, we we were kind of leaving that up that he knows what type of layout stooping the most. Um with me and with him, he was talking to the one room. It doubles as a uh like a sergeant's room and temporary uh evidence storage before it gets filed and locked in the the long term room. So he was looking at moving some of that stuff around. Uh currently, the one cell where the camera isn't working is used for equipment overflow and it just has random stuff piled in it. And like one thing he brought up though is if they don't have a lot of people here, but when they do, they do something stupid on the toilet, there's nowhere to put it right now. Other than putting it back into a a car or something like that because the other camera's not working and it's other stuff right now.
So when I hear furniture, it's for the function of the department for them to do the business on that side?
Correct. Uh some some new data, like some of the drawers on the cubicle or article board have been falling off and stuff like that. So they're not buying lazy boys or anything like it's office furniture.
No, just one word furniture. I just didn't know what it was. And we're going, we're voting right now. So we're gonna vote for the for the chief to spend the dollars. Is it with conjunction with mayor or just as he chooses or with council to see anything beyond just the total amount being spent?
Well, we talked about the cameras and about the
The computers right now.
Get started to get him started. We need that computers. And I'm sure if anybody wants to give their feedback on what furniture he gets, I you know.
No, that's not my my question is more of just understanding the past few years I've been here, just the communication work with the mayor. With the police department. So we're all on the same page and everyone's aware of how we're investing and what we're investing in. So just to know, as we're voting, if it's just, how much is the grant?
Seventy five thousand.
So seventy five thousand that you spent or if it's gonna be in conjunction with the mayor? I don't know. Maybe you've already met. I don't know. Just asking right now, is this other cameras still working? Truly spending seventy five thousand dollars to fit? Um my primary question is not on the furniture at all.
There's a list. There's a list of stuff that they've asked for.
Great.
I E guns, uh body cameras, street cameras.
That was my big.
Furniture. Uh I don't have the list with me. Um and that's something that Matt and I and and the chief were going over, have been going over.
So.
At a glance, I love this, you know, buy cameras now, but it goes beyond the cameras. I just wanted to understand what it was, just to know, but you know, viewing the cameras, I know the one camera on this side you can't see on the other side of the building. So if we're.
They're gonna fix the one camera on on the building, the garage camera?
Correct. Yeah. So the quote that we we're still waiting for the quote back to make sure it is under that eleven three. Um a a new license plate camera will go at center, replacing one of the stationary cameras there. The stationary camera replaces will get moved down to Wildwood. But currently, there's no cameras there.
Got it.
Two new license plate cameras to be put there. One watching South and one watching Wildwood. So basically, if last one can turn on to uh like South Avenue. And pretty much any way you enter S town, a license plate camera will pick you up.
Got it.
Um then there was one off the corner, kind of right above the police station here, that is broken. It will be replaced. There is the one at the end of the building. Uh there's just something wrong with the wiring of that. So that's gonna be reviewed and repaired. If it can't be repaired, that one is gonna be replaced. And that's what is included in this one.
Um and also the vet for about the evidence log.
That's on a different quote though. Uh this quote for cameras, that's all that's included right now. Um originally, when the grant was put in, there was some wish list that maybe we made some up on Second Street and or First and Center and things like that. When we did work, when we weren't fully funded, we kind of pulled that back for now. If we still have funds left over, we'll definitely go after something like that.
Yeah. Um do I have that list in my packet?
We don't. I can I can email it out there.
Sure.
You know, yeah, e- email that because I don't uh have anything. I didn't know that the uh camera in one of the cells was bad. How long has that been bad?
I'm not sure.
No idea.
I mean, if you I would think like you said, Joey, I think if you wanted to put like a an amendment to it, most of this stuff is gonna require a quote from the supplier or anything. He's not gonna just lock it in in five cameras. He's gonna request a quote for it. So maybe the quote can be supplied to the mayor and to the police committee. And then they could, as long as it falls within the the bidding requirements or the.
And that was my main question. I think and I guess it's it's implied that in working with chief, you're also talking for talking or working with our police department. But I talked to them last month. They have suggestions on on where cameras should be. So that will happen, I imagine. So the police will give input to the chief. Chief and mayor can work together. Council can see an itemized list and then we'll understand where to invest it. I don't know that I've heard, but is there a camera at Wildwood and Shannon or Wildwood and Second that's included?
That was part of the overall wishlist. That camera was not gonna be put in right now. Uh one of the issues, it it's easier to put them at traffic lights because the power source is there. Other intersections that don't have the traffic lights already, you have to install a a pole with a power supply. So we were kind of focused. We're talking with the chief, what cameras would be the most helpful immediately. Those were the ones that were being focused on. And then ones like at uh Second, Wildwood, or maybe some of the higher intersections, those would kind of fall after some of the other equipment.
I'm thinking of main arteries in town. So those are my biggest questions. I am full support of the spending. I think the furniture and the upgrades are necessary. The cameras are a high priority. I think the software and the system to to use them efficiently is a priority. So uh my biggest thing is overall that to understand what the itemized list looks like. Chief's working with the mayor and the council. Uh maybe that's I just make sure it's working without installing. So it's discussion.
So I I I think this is great that we're doing this. I think the cameras are much needed. Um I happen to be doing it. Involved with the design and engineering on a much larger, similar CCTV project at work. So I have a little bit of experience here. Um with this sort of thing, I I would, Matt, you you mentioned the security solutions. Are they like the security consultant that's you know, are they making recommendations for what we need or the specs of the cameras and specs of the computers?
Correct. And um the one trying to think, I I think with one camera at uh center that was gonna be replaced is because it it's an older version. It doesn't have the like the infrared night vision on it. So that's why it was gonna be replaced. Uh the reason we were heading with this um company is it's the company that all uh previous cameras have come with. It it works with the system very well. Uh I've heard when you start intermingling different companies, they all like their own software and things like that. So that could get very difficult or costly to co-mingle different brands. And I I think the cameras that we do have that are functioning have provided very useful. I know when talking with the chief, he said he's used them on several occasions to grab license plates or vehicles and led to arrests because of that. Uh so it doesn't seem as if they're of poor quality or anything like that. And I I know the guy, he works with the um the DA's office a lot. So a lot of the grants that come out of the DA's office for the cameras and everything run through this security solutions.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I mean, that sounds good. I I think like I I would just wanna make sure that we're looking at um you know, like I don't know if these are all analog cameras or if they're IP based, if they're um fixed position or pan tilt zoom. Um I I would I would really like to look at this holistically as to what cameras we have now, what kind of video server we have now, what the access is right now for the police. And I know it's been discussed. It it just it seems a little fuzzy to me what we're voting on without seeing an itemized plan of this is what we have. This is what um we're getting. And and I mean, Matt, it sounds like you do have some or all of those details. Um I would just like to be able to review it and make sure that we're not, you know, getting just a second check on what this uh what security solutions is recommending that it um I mean, I understand the proprietary nature of working with a specific system. Um but I just wanna make sure we're getting the best bang for the buck on what we're spending. And and I don't I don't I don't at all tend to hold this up. I feel like they could, we could continue with the quotes, the information gathering, pursuing it, and then maybe come bring it back to council for um you know, final decision. I I just.
I think the big thing, Dave, was we wanted to get this going tonight because of the laptop or because of the computer. The computer, he's afraid if that computer goes down and that and that uh Annette's computer, he doesn't have nothing to back anything up in there.
So are all the cameras being run off of Annette's computer currently? The current cameras?
No, the cameras themselves have.
The computer just has all his files and all all the backup for the police stuff. And the biggest thing was to get to get the co- the two, the one computer. What was the one, right, uh Matt?
They they currently have one desktop for like the the sergeants. And then they have uh Annette's laptop.
So they're looking ma- I think he's looking mainly to get the 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 la- uh the computer. So he doesn't run into a jack. Well, when that fact is done, he's uh he's onto the gun then.
So uh it so the computer's totally separate from the camera.
Correct.
Uh system. So I I mean, I yeah, I have no problem.
We're making the motion so he can, because it's part of that whole grant, that he can at least go get the uh the computers.
I'd like to just also, do you mind if I?
Dave, I agree with what you're saying a hundred percent. Um
Okay.
I didn't realize that they were working on this uh already. Um but you know, Annette has needed a uh laptop. Uh we should have got it. Uh but if it's that bad, we should have got it a year ago or so. I knew about it. I believe it was the last budget. And when I took seventy thousand dollars out of the police budget to help the borough get on its feet, I believe I left that in there so we could get a new laptop for her. And apparently, uh the department hasn't got her one yet. As far as the uh cameras, um yeah, if you wanna look into what we're getting and um what have you, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's my department. Um I would rather, you know, we'll get some quotes and what have you like your suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, if uh it I don't know if there is a possibility to get multiple quotes or or multiple perspectives on it. I would at least wanna see the technical specs, what we're getting. I I would also wanna make sure that um how the police are currently accessing the cameras is the most efficient way. There's not some um you you know, there's there's all sorts of things that go into these camera systems. It's not just the cameras themselves. It's the video server that stores the footage. There's the the head end equipment to to view the footage. Um you know, I I think there's a substantial amount of money in that grant. So um.
Well, that grant's gonna cover a lot more than just these cameras.
Yeah.
Body cameras, car cameras, and so on.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess if the laptop is the urgency and we can we can wait on the the, you know, a motion on the cameras until we get more details, then I I mean, I don't see a problem.
So expedite all of it, just so rather than go through a process meeting.
Yeah, I I just wanna chime in here. Um I guess I'm just uncomfortable with this motion as stated because I'd like to see the information that you were just talking about, Matt. Uh you listed a bunch of things. Are we are we voting on the list that you just read off? Uh does that include the computer? I honestly, I can't remember. Um a- and it just it uh I don't know. To me, it feels like we need the information, the specifics of the information. And then we get that to look at prior to the meeting. And then, you know, we say a a motion to purchase cameras uh for this, 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 and this specifically, or a motion to purchase, okay, we looked at three or however many laptop computers that are the most compatible for the department for what they're needed. And then we come here and make a motion and say there's nothing to stop anybody from doing the research.
Ray and I were just trying to get the balls rolling with it. I mean, uh I was not here for the the last workshop meeting, but I heard all the contentious uh conversations and everything that went on and how some cameras weren't able to pick up events and things like that. And I know for for years, since I've been here, we've talked about cameras not being able to see things. And now we have this money. So
Yeah.
Ray and I were just trying to get moving forward. So it didn't come three, four, five months down the road of conversation after conversation. Um and I and I do apologize for the mayor not having you in on the meeting. It it was a very last minute.
I I just don't wanna do what we did with the two police parts where I knew nothing about it.
No, and and that's why.
I'm not blaming you on that.
And that's why I had mentioned that possibly all this stuff would have to have a quote anyways. He's not gonna walk into a store and just buy something off the shelf.
Right.
He's gonna have to get a quote.
So can we see?
Comes to the mayor and the police committee ahead of time, or if you want it to come to all of council. I mean, that that's fine. Um if you wanna uh vote for it, every every expenditure, that's also fine. I Ray and I were just looking at it on uh as a way of getting things moving forward in the quickest possible way.
I guess it's just the vagueness of the motions of the chief to purchase equipment. It just sounds like we we vote on this motion and then the chief goes to the computer store or the camera store and says, I'll take one of those and two of those and three of these. And I I don't mind pushing this process forward, but I just think we need more information. And this motion as stated is too vague for me. That's all I'm saying.
Can we, to expedite this, we have the list forwarded that you guys met on last week so we can see where we stand and then?
I can send you the camera list right now. I was looking for the the other list that I have that spelled out all the grant stuff. I don't have it in my email right now.
Which one was that, uh Matt?
Uh the one with the the list is what I had just sent to John.
Oh, yeah, I I don't have a copy of that.
I have it in my email. I'll send it to everyone that it just shows what quote we asked for this time for the cameras.
You just listed some stuff verbally.
All the all the cameras I talked about?
I.
Or like all the, so like the the office furniture or the body cameras and stuff. That was just from my memory. I don't have that.
So I guess as it goes into Act sixty, Act sixty five, so we would have been provided this in advance for us to spend money by not seeing what we spent money on. So to have a blanket, yes. I I'm not comfortable. I I wanna spend this, so it's very.
My recommendation would be to authorize the chief to go out and uh solicit whatever quotes uh he wants to solicit because I think he knows what sorts of uh equipment he needs, what sorts of cameras he needs, what sorts of body cameras he needs. Uh and and go out and solicit the quotes, whether you need, you know, one, it could be anybody if it's under eleven five. You don't have to get three. It could be, you you know, you're 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 whoever. Uh bring that back if that's who he wants to use. Consult with the 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 mayor, make sure that they're in agreement. And bring that recommendation back to the council to to then approve that purchase. If you need three quotes, go out and get have the have the mayor go I'm sorry, the chief go out and get three quotes, consult with the with the the mayor and bring that back to council so they can approve that purchase. I I think that's the the best way to do it.
Can we ratify a purchase in the future if we email a correspondent or executive session?
You can't.
What are these things at the priority in the next two weeks?
You can't. You can't. The case law is clear, e- even if it's considered to be a sunshine law violation, but the ratification of that cures the violation. And it's 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 law. So you often have to do that and ratify it in a later meeting.
Because to to one degree, it's like we wanna be diligent. We wanna get this now. We wanna have it. It's a priority. The other one is we have to build this to make sure we're doing correctly and it's what we need and we all know what it is. I would have, you know, we're not having a camera because we have one camera down at the one corner of the borough. There, you know, there's a lot that's that's being purchased and a lot that's being sold that we shouldn't be able to speak to and know what it is. So uh how do we need to move the motion then?
Well, I mean, we don't even have, we don't have the quote back on the cameras yet. So I mean, the even if you approve the motion as it was made, there's no action yet because we don't have that information back. So I would just recommend uh amending the motion to allow the police chief to purchase a new computer.
The purchase?
To spec out the computer?
I I I'd like that first, yeah. I mean, is the chief expert on computers?
He buys all his computers through the the DA's office.
Is that where this is coming from, through the DA's office?
I could ask him, but I I know he he I have asked him where he doesn't just walk in the Best Buy and buy a computer. He
Okay.
He has a guy that he worked with.
I g- I guess.
I mean, you sort of have to rely on 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 the chief for purchases that are compatible with with his stuff in the in the police station. But I still think that that mayor, of course, the mayor, but also the council, needs to be aware of what's actually being. Mayor, of course the mayor, but also council needs to be aware of what's actually being bought. And how much it's.
Are these all Dayhow brand?
What's that?
Are these all Dayhow brand?
What?
The brand that we own that operate software and hardware, are these all Dayhow?
Dayhow?
I don't know that.
I don't know what that means.
Exactly, so the system we use is D A H A U, it's a system we own, we don't even know what system we own that we're approving a purchase, so.
Right.
If it's not Dayhow compatible, we need to make sure it is, so. So more, more of a question too, if we could just get a shopping list. It's done tomorrow, I mean, we shared my email, we expedited this, you know, it's all very possible, but we need to take.
Yeah, and so what I'm asking for the solicitor, does the chief need our approval in a motion? To go ahead and do some research and looking and, and, and getting some ideas about computers or cameras?
Necessarily, because it's not spending money, but, but it wouldn't hurt for this council to authorize them to move forward with soliciting uh. Quotes for expenditures under the grant.
The various items that he's looking to purchase, yeah. I'm, I'm not voting to have him go buy a computer right at this moment.
But as a show of confidence and support, if we amend it, I'm sure we'll all agree with like.
That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, where am I here? Yes, Ray, you, you made the motion, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes.
Why can't we just have John from the uh, Security Solutions come out here? Check the whole building and the town and see what we need, give us a price, he works directly with. Steven Zapala, Steven's a friend of this community. Why don't we do that?
Well, that could be perfect.
Knows computers real well, Joey knows them real well. You two be here and be in on the meeting. That's not a hard order, and I'm gonna ask another question. On that uh, list that wa- that I sent in with the grant. Body cameras for our police, I've talked to some of the police. I'm not so sure they want body cameras, I think they want body, um, phones. Can that be changed, even though we have body cameras on the, um. List?
Body phones?
They're phones that they carry with them, and they said that. The one policeman said to me, they would be probably a lot better than a body camera.
What, what do you mean by bo- body phones? I don't understand.
It's not a body phone, it's a phone that they carry with them. And he said, you guys have a much better way to, it's a special kind of a police phone.
Okay.
It's not just an ordinary cell.
So these are all things that we can look into, but right now, we're sitting here.
Be changed, that was actually on the grant list.
Right.
And I, I have one more thing I'm gonna say, then I'm done. Mayor Dave. Would like to have that police car lettering changed, that was on the grant, I think we can certainly approve that for Dave. He had nothing to do with the purchase of the cars, and he said, I would only like to see the lettering changed. Am I correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, can't we grant that to him?
The lettering of the vehicle was part of the grant.
Yes, I put, it was in there, but nobody said anything about it, so I'm bringing it up.
The whole reason this came up tonight was because of the, the event that had occurred. And the numerous emails and roomful people, and there was cameras that didn't catch it. And then on top of that, just the, the, the computer was just one added thing when we talked to, to the chief the other day, so. There's still many more things that the grant's gonna pay for.
Okay.
And, and like Joey said originally, we had a, a big wish list, we had a hundred thousand dollar grant, we had cameras at other main intersections. As to, as a starting point, we pared that back to be more cost effective, so we can get more of those items in the grant. Um, there was originally in the grants, if I'm not mistaken, I, I think we said twelve body cameras. Or, or maybe ten or something, that, that you said, that they could probably pair that back and share a camera or two. And maybe only buy five, so that, that saves some money there, so I mean, we didn't get awarded the whole grant, so we kinda have to. Pick and choose right now and then in the end.
Yeah.
Go back and get some of those wish list things that didn't get done initially.
I, I don't think that there's an issue here with everybody agreeing that we wanna purchase this equipment. I think it's the process that we're gonna go through to get the equipment, and if Ray would be willing to amend his.
I already said yes.
So now.
Ten minutes.
Sorry, what is the, it's not been ten minutes.
Yes, it was.
Since you just said you would amend it, it's been about three or four.
To authorize the chief of police to go out and solicit quotes. Uh, for. Uh, whatever. He's purchasing under the grant. And to bring those quotes back to mayor and council, whether he only needs one quote or whether he needs three quotes.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to get clear what we were amending the motion to. Any other questions or comments about this particular motion?
We need some other, I'm in there second.
Yeah, that would be Trish.
Matt, we're not in stone on these streets where these cameras are going, are we?
So, okay.
Wait a minute, I, I'm just asking a question.
Okay.
The reason I'm asking, we've had problems on North Avenue, we've had them on Third Street. If there's money, can we put some of them in other places?
Eventually, yeah. And I think cautious to even, to let everybody know where the cameras are gonna be, you, you don't want to play that hand if, if, if they're. Hidden, I mean, if they're right there and you can see them, it's one thing, but, you know, you, you don't wanna play your hand that there's cameras there, because that's a, that's a. Protection device that you wanna keep in your back pocket.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion on the floor, first by Mr. Suchovich, second by. Uh, Ms. Reddick Show Walter, to authorize the chief to solicit quotes for whatever we're purchasing under the um, direction of the grant. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. And we'll look forward to getting that information and the specifics about as we're going forward.
Yeah, I emailed everyone the, the quote that was just emailed to, or it's not a quote, it's the uh, request for a quote.
Okay.
For the cameras we mentioned, I don't have the documentation with me and I could have emailed. Uh, but as soon as I get to work tomorrow, I'll be sure to scan and email the rest of it.
Yeah, particularly that computer, I mean, I don't think anybody has an issue with getting the computer, it's how we get it, make sure we get the right one.
If we can vote by email for us to, to the board, I, I hope we do that, so they can never find priority for.
Okay, thank you. Anything else of informational nature, Mr. Suchovich?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, Ms. Lueelbo.
Thank you. Uh, everybody has in front of them the agreement for the Crips lighting agreement. Was some, some possession, you know, uh, with. Some of the areas and I think it's been narrowed out. I would like to pass this to me. Shall I read it or?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, as I was mentioning to you, Janet, before the meeting and maybe, um, Joey, you know more about this. I know that there is an ongoing issue. Between DPW and RAA about the maintenance of the infills. Under RAA, it says, everything other than weed control. And under DPW, it says, weed control in field one and field two. Including perimeter of the fence, we're required to reduce weed whacking by borough crews. I wanna make sure that our borough crew is okay with this.
Which section, Ray, have you?
Um, I'm looking at, um, well, it, it's uh, number two, and, oh, no, under Verona's responsibilities, it's the fourth bullet point. And under RAA's responsibilities, it's the fourth bullet point. And there has been a lot of tension that goes on. Uh, I don't, I can't speak to RAA, cause I don't believe I've ever talked to them about it, but I have talked. Many times to our department and, um.
Well, what, what is the, um. The problem, I mean, the crew?
I think that the DPW department's feelings is they're either fully in charge of the infield or they're not at all. And, and they're sort of, they don't wanna just pick up weeds that get pulled by RAA and just. Be just coming in to clean up their mess or, you know, they, they feel. It feels, I don't know what the, what the right word is, but. It, it, they're, 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 I don't think they'll be too happy about that. If it's continuing, I don't know if they've been talked to about this.
There was instance that happened last year, um, but it seemed like this year things. Worked out.
Well, I know the one field, I don't know which one's one and which one's two, but the one field, it seems like they're u- people are using it, it's pretty clear, it looks nice. The last time I saw the other field, there was a bunch of weeds in it, and I don't know what.
DPW cleaned them up.
Okay. Okay, so does that, okay. So DPW is okay with doing the weed control in both of the fields?
Which of these six bullets changed since last?
I don't know, I don't have the other ones. Yeah, I don't know what is, I don't have the other old one in front of me.
I can share what the overall sentiment is, I, I'm new to council, I'm, I'm new to helping step in in the moment, I, I listen a lot, I walk the field myself. I've heard feedback from, I've heard people, and I think what it comes down to is that people take a lot of respect of the work they do on our public works. And it's a little bit humiliating when they're not. When they're not able to do their job without having. Input or having someone start it or finish it or critique it immediately, or, or thereafter they, they, they've done something. So, but to answer your question, President, the two points I think are four and six on the Verona responsibilities that I've heard most feedback on. If you take a look at Bullet Four. Weed whacking, uh, for the perimeter fence, there's a semi-permanent batting gate area that's for the tunnel space, it's been anger from either. Fasteners or just physically, you know, it, it's not, it's not like a fabric drapery, you pull it up like it's furthest of this. You can lift it up. It's not public comment, I'm just.
Right, you're wrong. You're visible.
Okay. Right. When some of the work that has to be done up there, what I understand to be is that when it's semi, um. Uh, I lost my train of thought. That was rude, I'm sorry, let me try to start over. When the borough crew has to go up and some of these pieces are semi-fastened to the poles or to the ground. Or, or there's equipment within that fabric space, you can't draw up the, the fabric batting cage. To have the work done closely or go inside, so that's actually where the issue is with that part, so for Bullet Four, that's the feedback I received. Cause I talked to.
Whoa, whoa, hold on, Bullet Four is about weed control in the infills.
Okay, this is just another issue that brought up that's maybe not in the movement, so to share back two things I've heard.
Okay.
Okay, I talked to Janet about this, and if it's, if mowing day is on Friday, then Thursday, if we draw off the pieces of it, we'll get as close as they can, we'll make sure that they. Um, that they do the work as close as they can and, and have it done properly, so I think that's amenable, we, we talked to that.
Right, and I did talk with RAA on that, they are trying to find a solution when it's best to keep that netting up off the ground. So they can work with you, so our guys can, uh, mow and suck that batting cage.
Very easily fixed, I, I think where you see another community is that you, it's an improvement to have a fabric backdrop in the batting cage, if the ball hits it and rolls down, so that's great. When it comes to having equipment to it, you're gonna either rip off the net or you're gonna rip off the equipment, so that's easily fixed, so that was the first thing that brought to my attention. The second one was, actually there's three of them, the watering the field of the hoses or the plumbing, that was easily fixed, and I talked to that and it's been voted made available. To be part of our, uh, our property that's gonna be up there and be able to use the hose down or watering. Uh, and the third piece of this lap, you mentioned, maintenance and maintenance. This is short of also mentioning the cantina, so if somebody writes it for a birthday party, somebody uses it for a celebration, somebody, um. Does provide food service or sales and they're done. What we essentially are having have happened is that we have our borough crew who salt our streets and who shovels and plows our, our roads and does all the work, maintains the town. Cleaning fog toilets and, and refilling at the, at the discretion of some, some people that are essentially telling our, our team what to do. And we need to have a better process for that, and I think that if we get through this fall, I don't know how many more we can do in a week, but, um. This is, this is a sticky point.
Okay, can I just say something about that? All this says here is Verona's responsibilities, it doesn't say the Department of Public Works responsibilities. We can decide whatever we wanna decide about how to maintain the men's and ladies rooms and, quite frankly, you know, the. The whole pavilion in terms of cleaning it, it doesn't have to involve the Department of Public Works.
So my question was, if it's dirty tomorrow, are we cleaning it?
Yeah, and that's a good question, and I don't know that.
And it's ambiguous, so I think what's gonna happen is somebody other than someone here is probably gonna call, plan it, and it's gonna be three people over to where we have our, our people up there. And we may, you know, we have a lot of things that go into the borough that I just wanna make sure that we address that, now if we get through the next few games in the next few weeks, that's fine, but. I, I think we need to define this, this line's not defined, it comes down to. And I think it's a, it's a fair conversation to have, but to pass this now as it is, I don't see there being an issue for you to take a look at either the company that does inside here. Or talk to AJ and, and let him know what expectations would be, but that, those, to answer your question, those are the big sticking points, I think.
So when you talked to him, he didn't talk about the whole weed thing?
This was the past issue, man, I don't know that it's a twenty twenty one issue, unless anyone hears it. Anyone else?
I'm just, I just shared what, what I understood from him, and it's been this year. It's happened with, I don't think it's happened this year, but I. I mean, it's, it, it is odd to me. Why one organization has full and complete maintenance on both infills and bases, but won't do the weeds.
To be honest with you, like, as I'm seeing all these things, as I'm becoming less new and I'm, and I'm learning more, I mean. Our borough team doesn't even have a key to get into the rest of it, do they? So if, if we draw ourselves back and recalibrate where we are, which I keep saying is, is borough property, if it's a borough building, then you have to maintain it. For the parts that we do extend by contract, I mean, we're waiving costs, but we're incurring costs, so some of this is contradicting to me, but I didn't draw this up in twenty seventeen. I know we have someone that has the deadline by the end of this month for moving off to another organization, we signed this, but these are the issues I'm hearing. And, you know, all council life is saying, please provide better context or historical context to this for, for me to understand. You know. What was before me, but these are what I'm hearing now.
I mean, my, my main concern, and I think there's some overlap, is, is. You know, AJ presented on August thirty-first an email to council. About his concerns with the agreement. And so, I would, I would just say if we, if we were going to pass this tonight, that we make sure that. All of his concerns were, were addressed, whether it, you know, meant. You know, modifying something or just talking it through with him, is that something that's been? I mean, has that been done with, with AJ?
I know Joey has had some conversations with AJ, I have not personally.
Is this the email?
No, what's up on the screen is the agreement, I just pulled up email on my phone, um.
Cause I don't, I remember getting the email, but I don't remember the details of the email. And I don't know that.
Past year's agreements, that's why I had to clarify it off, so some of the things I believe would be a little, I talked to Janet about these, I talked to AJ about it, the hoses, for example, easily done.
Okay.
Um, the over-communication of when mowing will be, and if it's a rainy day on Friday, maybe it's done on Monday or it's done on Wednesday, and just. Make sure we communicate for prepping the property, be mode, so if there's anything that's in the infield, the outfield, the batting agent, or else, then there's a chance to move in, if it's not moved, you can't mow or go be. Uh, the biggest thing I think is just the cleaning of the rest of it, so if, if we do pass this and just simply put. Maintenance of the men's and ladies rooms, I'd also add canteen on this with the new roofing, uh, or the, or the pavilion space. Um, we as council then need to identify what the solution is, my proposal I mentioned two weeks ago. Would that we take a look, uh, company that cleans our carpets here and that does the, the rest of it's here, and we extend them to the new pavilion. That was just my solution, that's something I think council can discuss, but, um, I'm open to hearing any other suggestions.
I think that's a good idea, and certainly, you know, from the parents, even three people, and you wanna cover the price and work the phone with them.
And if that's the case, if they're just a phone call away, I don't work with them here, but I imagine if they're at stake. There is a, a party or a use on Sunday, you stop by first thing Monday, I imagine, I don't know how it would work though, I don't.
Well, I would think that we would have to get a quote from them about how much that would cost. And the, the guy who is the head guy of Kirkman, it, it's impossible to get. And the, the guy who is the head guy of Kirkman, it, it's impossible to get on the phone, he never answers.
Well, that's not good business, and maybe that's not an option.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, we can try, but I mean, it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, look at each split.
Yeah, I just don't want.
They need to come up, assess the area, decide how much it could cost us, we're not doing it every week. We only maybe need to do it after each event. We don't know when all those events are going to be, I don't know if they're willing to quote for a piecemeal job like that. I, I just don't know, I'm not saying they won't, I just don't know.
Even normal use would require that we refill and we, we clean the space, it's an amenity. We have a lot of residents that use it, we have neighbors that come and use it, a place to celebrate, celebrating, you know, we just celebrated it, we have 150th celebration. We need to think through just beyond what it used to, we need to think about what it is now. This pavilion has been enhanced, so we need to maintain it. And I, I just want to say again, I don't think that it's dependent that our public works team address the restrooms and the sinks. I think that their time is better used in other places, and I think that a clean crew is probably going to be cheaper to use as well, and we can have their, their time spent out there. So to answer your question from a couple of minutes ago, that's what I've heard, that's what I've gathered from your back.
All right, well, it may be that things have been resolved with the, the whole weed thing because the whole weed thing is now under the responsibility of Verona. Not just picking up stuff after it's been picked out of the field by somebody else. So maybe that part of it will be okay, you know? I don't know what else is needed for full and complete maintenance of both infields and bases, but whatever that is, I guess RAA is doing that, and they just need us to get rid of the weeds.
To that question, I thought there was some discussion that could maybe need to be some of the, that's why.
No, I don't think that they're, I don't think we're talking about using chemicals.
Okay.
My, my understanding, you just go and pull them out, right?
That's what they did recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, so, yeah.
RAA was appreci-, I mean, Brian Duncan from RAA did reach out to Janet and I and was appreciative of, of doing that.
Okay, all right, so I.
Like I said, somebody's seen the house grievances from that last.
Okay. So that, that's fine then, I just want to make sure that that's been resolved.
I'd be fine to pass this from that last bullet point, so long as council would be comfortable scoring options that gives the object to the weed thing of summer and fall, where there's use of the facility. Some points can be locked up for the winter, may winterize, but, um, I would be more comfortable knowing that we score other options other than the borough team to do that process, of the restrooms and canteen.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, um, I, I, the way I see it is that we need to look at, you know, we have a brand new pavilion with different amenities than the old one, and we need to look at, uh, you know, holistically how we're handling the maintenance and, um, operation of that facility. And I, I don't, I don't think, I think whether or not we, we agree to this, or, you know, pass this, this, this motion for the agreement with RAA, I, I think it's, it's pretty clear. I mean, we're, we're not talking about pushing the maintenance of the men's and ladies rooms on RAA on a regular basis, we're going to be responsible for that regardless, and that's part of the new pavilion, and we need to address that, you know, like, like you mentioned, Joey, long-term, so, um, I, I don't have a problem with it as is, it's just a matter of figuring out how we're going to handle that maintenance internally.
Yeah, and it was a wonderful dedication from the pavilion, it was a great experience last month to do that together, but, you know, moving forward, this is going to be years of maintenance, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be used a lot. I mean, that's the whole idea of a superior deposit. I've done parties for my kids at pavilions before, we pay a hundred dollar deposit down if you don't clean it, and they have a service component, they use the money for it. So there are solutions to this, but I, again, think that we could explore that, I'd be fine to move forward with this as long as we know that, you know, we wrap up these next few weekends, the next, you know, series of weeks, we come up with a different solution.
All right, I'm not sure what we do between now and the few weeks.
I'll go and do it, I'll volunteer.
Okay, Janet, great.
You have to volunteer.
No, we have keys in the office, you can.
And Jay, that's not what I'm saying, I can work with AJ to make sure that he knows. And I, you know what, I know you would be up there and do it, and the park was open, so I, I realize that, but I will, I will work with Christine, work with AJ, make sure that we're not having five people request work done, but I'm just saying that we'd like to rest, I think that's fair.
Okay, so we'll come up with something. Thank you.
Would you like me to reach out to any of the contractors I acquired or from earlier years?
Um, no, not yet. Or we could, maybe you could give the information to Christine, and then she could do it.
Say no.
Pass it on, bring it.
I'd like to make a motion to pass this agreement between the Borough of Verona and the Riverview Athletic Association for the, uh, kids later.
Okay, first by Mrs. Lualbo, second by Mr. Warren, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
We can sign up in Sanacy, and I will go to Rich tomorrow, and he's going to stop down tomorrow.
It just needs the two of us, what is this? Oh, we need two witnesses also. Yeah.
Also, uh, we need to purchase the hose and nozzle and reel for the, for the Kribs watering. It will be going to the borough, so, um, whoever uses it will be responsible for when we get back up and in the storage, storage shed, but this way, we will have our own hose, you know, RA is to be able to use it. Um, we are suggesting like at least a hundred foot, um, hose. AJ mentioned for that possibly, and go along with the reel and the nozzle, it will be compatible to be able to use for our other fields. Two, we have control, or we'll have it, we need to clean the pavilions, close it down, clean the spray next to the playground, you know, there's people getting, and stuff, they will have that. Yeah, we will need to get Christine. So I was just a little crazy, my, uh, they're not here. Yeah.
I'll second my motion.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, I was signing the thing and I missed what you said about purchasing the hose and the nozzle and the reel. Yes, thank you, okay, so first by Mrs. Lualbo, second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I guess I just want to ask again, like, hose, nozzle, reel, what do we, like, what's our ballpark of what that is?
I'm just, that's maybe a different, of what I, it's just a little bit of pricing on there. My, uh, I think a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty would be the most.
For all three items?
Yeah, for all three.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, now, here, pass this down to Janet, anything else, Janet?
Just, um, the next part to our meeting should be October.
So, do you guys prepare an agenda for your parts of rec meetings?
Yes, we do.
They are also a local agency, the Rec Word is a local agency, so they have to comply with X sixty-five as well, which means posting the agenda on the door and on the website, so everybody's aware.
Okay.
I actually got, uh, one, one of my, uh, local communities got called out for, uh, the Rec Word not doing that, on August twenty-ninth, the day it went into effect.
And that's all I have, thank you, I'll break for that.
Okay, thanks Janet, Mrs. Prevenza.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We'll start with newsletter, it is at the printers, and we are really hoping to have it in your mailboxes as soon as possible. Uh, and we're now accepting ads and articles for the January, February, March issue, and those are due December the first. And, um, sooner you get them in, the better, we can get the thing to the printer real quick. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, um, thanks for sending out to our chamber for giving payment to Rich Bonneker, uh, to paint the two signs, the two welcome signs to Verona. And, uh, the work has been completed, I understand, and it looks very, very nice, ready for the hundred fiftieth. Uh, to Rich Bonneker, thank you very much, good job, Rich. Uh, also, we want to thank our, uh, the Chamber of Commerce asked that I extend thanks to our businesses and the chamber for donating to the hundred fiftyth celebration. So thanks go out to the chamber and to all of our businesses for their gracious donations to our hundred fiftyth celebration. Uh, Chamber of Commerce meeting is going to be on Tuesday, September twenty-one, and that'll be at six thirty here in our borough building. Historical Society, uh, the meeting this month will be on Thursday, September the sixteen, seven PM here in the borough building, and the speaker is going to be Frank Santucci, and he's speaking on the Verona that you never knew, and, um, if you have any questions about the, the meeting or the Historical Society, you can feel free to call ROTA, that number's four one two eight two eight three six zero seven. And thanks go out to ROTA for always putting these wonderful meetings together. Uh, Twin Borough Ministries, the community dinner this month will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-ninth from four thirty to six thirty, and it's going to be hosted by Oakmont Methodist Church, and it will again be a grab and go dinner. Uh, also, our Methodist Church here is going to have a flea market, and it will be held on Thursday, September thirtieth, Friday, October first, and Saturday, October second. The hours are going to be Thursday and Friday from two to eight, and Saturday's hours will be from nine to two. So stop by and get some good bargains there, and you'll be a good, uh, help to the church. ALOM, uh, they did ask me to please remind everyone of the upcoming seminar, which Nancy had touched on lightly, it's, it's entitled Government Benefits Advisory Seminar. And that's going to be held Friday, September twenty-fourth, at Cranberry Highland Clubhouse. And if you're planning to attend, uh, please be sure to register with the office, and that number's four one two two six one two five two one. And I did want to mention, um, a few weeks ago, someone had mentioned ice cream for the children. And, um, the ice cream will be taken care of for the children at the picnic. And, uh, I do want to ask Vince, since you're here, I don't have to call you Vince, can you pick up, I've made arrangements for an ice cream cooler, because we're going to have quite a bit of ice cream. So if you can maybe pick up the cooler, take it up to the, uh, to our park, up to Kribs Field, and put it inside, but you'll have to plug it in because it takes a while to cool it down. So if you can do that, that would be super. Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we need it up there tomorrow. And, um, let me see if there's anything else. Oh, one more thing, and then I'm done. I'm sure that you all know that, um, our state senator Jay Costa is going to be here for the parade. Uh, I've also made arrangements for a citation, uh, Dawn and I worked on it together, and I thank you very much, Dawn, for your help. We are going to have Senator Costa bring a citation for our hundred fiftieth celebration, and then we would like to have it put into the time capsule. So, um, that's where we stand with all of that, and, um, I would like to thank our attorney Craig and, uh, engineer Matt, who helped out with the ice cream. Thanks to million guys, appreciate you abundantly. And if there's any questions or comments, I'll be glad to take them. But that concludes my reports, thank you very much.
Thanks, O'Neal.
All right, thank Sylvia. Um, Madam President, I believe is on a nature break, um, so I, I have nothing else to report from COG. Um, I, we haven't had a meeting since that, since the, uh, since July, actually, so, um, at this point, uh, we will hear comments from the public on public-related items. Please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand and clearly state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, Ms. Lualbo, please do three downstairs. I'd like to apologize to Joey for interrupting him, uh, I'm sorry for that, but I, I will never stand for any appointed or elected public official standing up in front of the public and, and spreading misinformation. Uh, the net at Kribs Field, it has been able to be lifted up for about four years now, three years now. So it is not fastened to the ground, if the DPW wanted to cut the grass, all they would have to do is simply lift the net up, cut the grass, it's not anchored, it's not fastened, it's been like that for years, so. For someone to say that it, it's anchored or attached to the ground is completely false. Moving on, I got a lot of stuff, uh, which I can get done in three minutes. Uh, two hundred foot of hose is probably what's going to be needed to reach the Kribs one. I'm just saying that because our football fields are a hundred ninety-six feet long, and they fit in between the concession stand and the, uh, infield of Kribs one. So if you get a hundred feet of hose, it's going to make it halfway. Just, just for note, um, earlier on, there was a lot of talk about, uh, technology in the borough. I was contacted by a company called PC Doctor, it's, it's a guy that I know who, it, it, it's a tech company that will come and troubleshoot all of the town's tech. They, I believe I told them to send a proposal, he can't send a quote until he actually tours the premises and sees the equipment. Uh, his name is Obie Titlebaum, I believe you guys should have received an email from him. Uh, so that might be something to pursue, since there was a lot of technical issues talked about tonight, and the meeting started late because of technical issues, so that could remedy a lot of the situations we have going on in the borough, including all the campuses that are about to install. It might be a good idea to hire a tech company to service this. Um, Sylvia, um, can, I pick the freezer up on Thursday?
Okay.
I will talk to Angela and schedule a time, but I'd be, I gotta go to restaurant to buy food and containers for the picnic, and I can just give it one round trip.
All right, I'll talk with her and make sure it's okay.
I, I have her on message, too, I'll, I'll, I'll rely on also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for securing that. From the borough, from either DPW or whoever's going to deliver it, or Saturday or Sunday's event at Kribs Field, we will need some tables, uh, Matt said that the picnic tables might be in, I'm not going to bank on that, so just in case, I would like to have some tables delivered to Kribs.
How many?
Some chairs.
I don't know, I think we have like five or something. Oh no, I guess we have one, we have more than five.
I don't know, you probably need to be using some here for Saturday, too.
They're gonna use them here Saturday, load them up in a truck and bring them up to Kribs on Sunday morning.
Bring them up, we'll use them when we want to pull.
Are, aren't there tables in the pavilion now, the wooden ones?
Yes, there's four.
Four?
We have four hundred people shopping.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, I just want to clarify that there's four tables.
There is four, and I was going to do not, if we get the metal picnic tables, before then, I was going to do wooden tables out of brass.
How many metal picnic tables are we getting?
Four.
Oh, okay.
There are ten people on, I believe, eight people, and there's one one growing six, yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
They'll, they'll get a couple more people. Uh, so for Sunday, we will need the event grill, I hope.
Yeah, I told them about that.
The propane spilled up on it, some tables, chairs, uh, if you have any extra food trash cans, maybe one or two replaced off the park would be great. I was told that, uh, supplies for the bathrooms came in, so I will make sure those are stocked up for the evening that Saturday, I'm going to talk to Christine after the meeting about that. I'm gonna talk to Christine after the meeting about that. That is, oh, for the picnic. The LBAF would like permission to place a toy donation box in the entrance of the building either the first or second week of October for our annual toy drive, or if families need. If that is okay with the borough.
Yeah.
We had it in there last week.
Sure, I don't think that's a problem, but right now we have some other stuff, the cat donation box and salt and the shovel and...
I just want to be clear.
Yeah. Might want to, there's some, there's a bin in there that says, belongs to the garden club, and might want to get them to come and take their bin.
I thought they, I thought they...
Yeah, good, thank you.
And the LBAF has talked with Methodist Church, and we are going to do a puppet and art workshop that's free to the public, Saturday, February fifth, from five PM to eight PM, and that once again is run Methodist Church. So far, we have Dave English as one of the instructors coming, and all the supplies and everything provided, and it's free. I've also talked to Joe Wells for Oakmont, and he has about eighty percent confirmed. I sent a message with the confirmation date, and I'll wait to get back. So those two were slated instructors, and should be there. Like I said, everything will be provided, and this is for all ages, kids and adults. If anybody has an interest in art or wants to learn how to build puppets from Dave and do illustrations with Joe, that, that will be available beginning of the winter. So everybody that's gonna stir crazy will have an outlet to take the kids to, out of the house, unlock creativity, and hopefully some of the gaps that has dropped off in the last couple of years, the program has been lacking a little bit for funding reasons and... I think that is it.
Can I sign up for public workshop?
Not yet. I, I just got confirmation from the church, just that the space will be available and donated, and I got confirmation, they, they weren't supporting, just waiting for confirmation. Joe, he's very receptive, and he said that the barn up there, it's gonna be free. So I will be making a sign-up sheet very shortly after the community weekend this week, and I will let you guys know to where I'll post the flyer here, and the post on the corner on Penn Street, probably on River View, and I'll show it, it's to all churches. I don't think there's gonna be a sign-up. I mean, there can be, but it's a different event, so once the space fills up, you come late. The building, you know, we hold so much, so, but I don't wanna put it in the base. This is the first event of its kind, so they usually start out slow, and then they'll page.
Okay. Thank you, Vince.
One other thing, I work with DirecTV a lot. There is also a Verona, Pennsylvania, and Philadelphia.
Oh.
And another one in New York, but when I owned the restaurant in Eagles, like, ten years ago, I got a couple phone calls from Philadelphia asking us to do a pizza sandwich. I heard in the street, I said, "Where are you located?" "We're about ten minutes outside of Philly." We're, we're on the south of the state, so just letting you know that, and they saw. Get it in the air.
All right.
Thanks, Vince.
We're sponsored in Tennessee also.
Okay. Next up would be, Jess is next?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Go ahead, Jess.
Hi, Jessica Verone, seven two two Burno Street. I have like two different comments. The, the first is about the one-hundred-and-fiftieth, so just want to say thanks to everybody who's volunteered for the event. Several of you are on council, and we also have a ton of community members involved. This could not happen without all of the volunteer efforts. People have spent a lot of their personal time working on this for like two years, fundraising and planning, so I'm really grateful for everyone's support and dedication. So, yeah, as Nancy mentioned earlier, we have a whole weekend of activities. You can find the schedule on veronocomunity.org or by looking at our Facebook page. I've been posting every day this week with new vendors that we're gonna be having joining us. So on Saturday, we'll have, I think, twenty-five vendors, we'll have food trucks, local breweries, activities for kids, we'll have the touch-a-truck, rock painting, a pet parade, and then we have our headliner performance, which is Circlavation. It's a group that does stunt performing and aerial acrobats, and it's gonna be really fun. So please spread the word and get your friends to come out to Verona. The parade, of course, is at twelve-thirty on Sunday, coming down Center Avenue, turning onto ARB. I think we're gonna have a lot of great acts for that as well. Sylvia worked to get the Shriners to come, and they're always a hit. And the picnic, of course, Vince has mentioned, and he's heading up, is gonna be really nice. I want to thank LBAF for their donation of food. We'll be having a limited supply of free food, burgers and dogs, and we're also encouraging residents to bring a dish to share, and having a contest for pie and chili. If you would like to enter, there is still time to enter the pie and chili contest, which should be fun. And then, of course, there'll be some vintage and modern electric cars, like a mini car show happening on Second Street during the picnic. So if anyone from the community has an hour or even less time to volunteer this weekend, let me know. I just sent an email out to the community group about it with open slots. We could really use the extra support in a few areas. So a couple of requests for the borough, there's, we want to make sure there's trash cans. I think, well, I guess maybe Ray is on. I should have checked with you first, Ray, if you're here, but we just want to make sure we have the trash cans available in Railroad Park for Saturday, although I know we're getting our own, so maybe we don't need those. But also would like to request help hanging, we have a banner that has our sponsors listed on it, and we want to get that hung on the front of the pavilion, so can the Public Works crews help with that? I have it, I can bring it to the Borough Building tomorrow.
Yeah, you can bring it to the Borough Building, but right now the banner hanging on the front of the pavilion is the one that goes with the flags. I mean, is that something that, should we just take that down?
Take it down, it's our town.
Didn't the flags get taken down?
They did, but the banner, I just saw today, is still hanging up there. But that's okay, we'll just take it down and put it back up later. Yeah, bring it down tomorrow if you can.
So that, that's it for Community Day, but, and the one-hundred-and-fiftieth. And I just had one other comment, because I wanted to follow up from my, the last meeting, and I had asked the borough for a couple things, and I wanted to follow up. One was to have protocol established to notify the community if there was like a bomb threat anywhere or any militia present in the borough. I don't know that there's been any action taken on that, but just sending you a friendly reminder. And also wanted to get confirmation that police are reporting any like hate group activities, like there's stickers that were found. I know residents have called and told the police about those. They found them on like Algonia River Boulevard. They have like anti-Semitic imagery on them. I've seen them, so I know that they do. So I want to make sure that those are getting reported to the FBI as appropriate, and I haven't gotten any, any feedback on that either. So would appreciate some follow-up on those two things. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. I think Dan's next, right?
Yep. Hey, folks, can you hear me? Yep. All right, wonderful. Dan Scholwalter, four forty North Avenue. This is me speaking more as a member of the Planning Commission. The eighteen thousand dollars that Councilwoman Scholwalter brought in is actually a very important first step to the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the, the plan will be taking time to come to fruition, but just getting this initial grant shows that we're in the ballgame, and future grants down the road will be easier for us to get, because it looks like we're organized, it looks like we're moving the ball. So I really would like to thank Councilwoman Trish for getting that eighteen thousand dollars.
I don't love what you're talking about.
Now, the, the Planning Commission, sorry, my daughter's interrupting you right now. The Planning Commission will actually have a table on this Saturday down at the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary to answer any questions that anybody may have about what we are planning on doing and moving forward, so we will be providing information to the public. So just letting you guys know that, and we're moving forward on this. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Thanks, Winnie. Let's see, I see Kathy. Kathy Maddox has her hand up. Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
Hey, Kathy Max, two three four Penn Street. I just wanted to mention the house that burned down is, and is seemingly not going to be something that could be occupied in the past or in the future. I know there's a lot of properties in Verona that are under the similar situation, especially up on Fourth. I just, I'm hoping that this property in West Railroad isn't something that is going to be like a long-term issue for the borough. I'm just wondering where that, that whole process stands.
Yeah, I think, Matt, didn't you mention that earlier?
So to answer your question, with the, the county Act one fifty-two demos, they do have an emergency demo in place. You have to apply to the county for that. We have already submitted letters of intent along with pictures to the COG, and he is submitting that to the county. So hopefully we can get that done through the, the one fifty-two. If not, we did apply for that for next year's CDBG demolitions as well, so we're, we're trying to attack it from multiple angles.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, if there's no more comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, who's making the first?
I mean, I, oh, I thought you said, did you make the motion?
No, I don't make motions.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, second. First by Mrs. Prevenza, second by Mr. Suchevich. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, of course not. Yeah, adjourn.